At our budget committee meeting underway. Looks like we have two items on our agenda, or at least last time I looked at it, we did. I'll turn it over to whoever wants to start with the budget discussion, Mr. Hickman.
Thank you Chair Fulbright. School board members, I just first want to say, you know, what we've been doing the last couple of weeks has been a grueling task. We have fleshed out every position that we have in this district. We have gone to EIA numbers, we've gone to predictions, we've gone to everything that we could possibly go to, to see where cuts can be made. I feel like before we even get to that point, I just want to make this statement and be very clear what we were up against. And Doug, if I'm off on any of these numbers or go sideways, please correct me. Last year, we started with a $103.9 million budget. Most of you, or all of you, I think should have known that was a deficit budget from the time you voted it in. As amended, at the end of this year, we're looking at a $106.5 million budget. On top of that, if we were just to maintain everything, not add a single position, not change a single line by adding more to it, that number would be 109 million, point seven, 109 million, 724,128 dollars to maintain the same budget as we ran this year. With that said, looking at trying to find that area, that lane, that sweet spot, or whatever we want to call it, to where we need to bring the budget to has been very tough. I want to do what's best for the kids of Murray County Public Schools. One of the things that's been on the top of our list this whole year has been learning loss. We've talked about it, we've discussed it in great length about learning loss due to the COVID pandemic. I really feel the numbers that we're going to present tonight, I want you to know, these are the bare bone minimum numbers. That means we're predicting this staff based on flatlining on growth. What I'm afraid and could possibly and probably will happen is I may have to come before you in August and September and say, we're out of compliance on a ratio at these schools, I need another teacher. That's how far we've cut these numbers to that point. I know that you guys aren't the funding body. I feel that I could look at every one of you and you would say, hey, if you need 120 million, I'll give you 120 million. And I know that buck doesn't stop there. But what I do ask is as we move forward, please remember that we have done due diligence to get the number we're at tonight. The big differences, I want you guys to realize that that would happen because what would get us to that 109 million if we kept everything the same, isn't because we added people, it was because of the step raises is automatic, close to $1 million just to add each year. So each year we have this pay rate, we can bank on our budget having to be raised around $1 million. It includes the current fiscal year's active and vacant positions. Many people have asked us about these vacant positions. What I want to make clear about the vacant positions, these vacant positions change monthly, by monthly, they change because these are positions that are out there, being posted. Most of them are hard to fill areas such as your sciences, chemistry, and your mathematics. But we can't just say, well, nobody's taking that job we do away with them because we have to show the state at least we have these posted and we're trying to get somebody in that position. Indirectly, somebody is in that position usually, it's a sub or some type of body as a sub or interim or some fact like that. And then finally, we've passed a lot of amendments through this current year. And it's, I'm not going to go through the diatribe of what all they were, but that is another consideration that makes this budget go to that 109 if we were not to change it all. We did change it, we went through, we made many cuts. I hope tonight, or this evening, that we work in collaboration and cooperation. And when you see areas that you need to know something about, we want to dig into, we hope to present it by line so we're very clear, transparent, what we did. I do want to say on top of this, due to some of the sensitivities of the cuts, we feel like we're not ready to say this position is coming from this grade, this school. We want to wait until the position has, this budget has been approved for that cut and we can make sure to get that list to you however we can within the legal limits, we can ask Jake, but we just want to make sure that we're careful how we proceed because some, many of you have sat in a classroom as a teacher and all of us have sat as a student. This has the potential to bring Murray County's morale down when you talk about the number of positions we're talking about cutting. And when you bring morale down, it gets a bad taste in people's mouth and it'll be even harder to attract that best talent to Murray County. I know we've got to do it, I know you guys, it's beyond your control as well, but I just wanted to make those as my opener remarks so we can just be very careful and we can be very transparent, but also have regards for some of the positions that it will affect. With that said, if everybody has opened their budget document, and I believe we have it up there.
Thank you, Mr. Lecan, and I want to ask one quick question. With the, and I don't, this is just stuck in my head, with the penny allocation versus maintenance of effort, that maintenance of effort number staying the same lowers our penny allocation by two pennies, am I correct? I tried to do that math this afternoon and I wasn't 100% sure.
Our, our maintenance of effort is going to go up substantially if we approve this budget at 107 million, 153.
I'm not even there yet, I'm just talking about the gross revenue numbers right now.
I got you, so, and that is the revenue number. Basically, that property tax number of the original budget, 31,870, or sorry, let me scroll up, that's not 31,870. The property tax number of 24,264, we would be sliding up to 25,560. So that would increase your maintenance of effort by 1.3 million because that is in the maintenance of effort calculation. And then also the sales tax going from 16.8 to 19.8, that would be a $3 million maintenance of effort increase. The maintenance of effort is built up by these revenues, I want to highlight them.
Okay, I guess I was just looking at the top line then.
Right, and just the top line, so basically you'd be looking at six cents, the maintenance of effort would go, go up if you're quantifying it a cent.
I guess when I was doing my numbers, I was looking at the 2021 actual, what's the difference between budget and actual?
So, maintenance of effort goes off of budget only.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, thank you very much, that answered my question.
Okay, so no discussion on the budget, Google. There was a convert.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and just start.
Go ahead, please.
If you don't mind, I would like for us to start presenting with the 71100 category.
Okay, thank you.
And the 71100 category, that is where all of our pretty much GP teachers come from. One thing that I do want to note, and Doug has been saying this for five, six months now about the deficit, when you look down at the total line on the actual and the original, there's going to be an increase in that line at the end of the school year because we entered this year of no fault of anybody's, we knew we were coming into a deficit budget of about, I think he said 1.3 million?
That, that's just on the teacher salary line item. I project that we'll overspend it by 1.3 with current staff, that's correct.
So, that one line, but I guess what I'm saying is once you put that 1.3 in that top line, it'll change the bottom line. So I didn't want you guys to look at that bottom line and say, well, you know, here we are at this number at 49,506, and you said you cut and we're at 49,669. Because if you add that 1.3 to that number, you'll see it will exceed the cuts. The cuts will exceed what we did this year, and that is including the step raises and increase on medical as well.
Okay, not just, I'm not going to hog the whole meeting, but I do want to ask just a couple of questions on that. So the original budget, 48.5, you're saying was 1.3 million under budgeted?
Specifically, Mr. Chairman, the teacher's line item, 31,870, that is under budget by 1.3.
If everything else is the same, I'm looking at that bottom line number, scroll, scroll back, yeah, 48.5. So that should have technically at least been 49.8. And you're at 49.6.
Yes, sir.
So if we were to take out the, okay.
Yeah.
All right, we, okay, so basically we about, could account for, let's see, if we take a million, back a million out of that. 1.2 million worth of cuts basically is what is reflected within this budget, this part of the budget. Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Compared to the superintendent's proposal, sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, you may.
Sorry, sorry, sorry about that. So the original request was 51.78 million under the superintendent's proposal, which included additional positions, and so that has been cut down to 49.6. And the reason it's at 49.6 isn't because we're underfunding it again, it's because an action is being taken to reduce positions in this particular department.
The only other line that I'd like to bring attention to in the 71100 is the 163 line. The 163 line, the increase there is just the, their raises that they get because we did not cut EA's because we're already under the number that they recommend from the state. The difference between an EA and a teacher is the teacher, you have to make sure that ratio's there. EA, they just strongly encourage you to make sure your ratio's there. So we are sorely behind on what that ratio should be. So we, we didn't increase it, but we just didn't feel like we needed to cut that either being already under what their recommendation is. And with that, I'll open it, any questions for the seven, this?
I have a question on line item 198, substitute teachers. Just looking at what, what we spent this year, and obviously, full expectation we would spend a lot less this year, but no one knows what next year will look like. We don't know if subs are going to come back, we, and, and we are, basically, if we go off the 1920 actuals, that audited number of 415,000. I, I went through this today and just tried to find anything I could find, but my thought there is that maybe we could cut that number $50,000 knowing that, and Doug may correct me right now, but, but, and just knowing that for budgetary reasons, cut it by 50,000, but realizing you guys may have to come back next March or April and we have to pull money out of fund balance to cover that, but.
And you, and you may be fine with that, but in the 1920 fiscal year, you know, substitute work stopped March 16th. So, so you were able to go two months and 10 days without having to have a sub. But, but that's just food for thought, you very, very well could be up for grabs as far as a, and, and I would defer that decision to the board and Michael.
But you did bring up another point there, if you notice, one of the things that Doug did recommend was seeing an increase in our certified substitute teachers this year, he did kind of flip flop those two numbers. You know, I have no problem saying, hey, we'll take 50,000 out, roll the dice and come back for a fund balance, but I'm trying to, knowing that, trying to stay out of fund balance as much as possible. But if that's something that the board, you know, and that's, this is one of those moments, we can vote and see what the will of the board is on that one, because I have no problems at all. I'll defer to you Chair Fulbright.
So in relation to substitutes, I have a question for that going forward. I know this year we did an increase on their wages to attract substitutes, is that something that we're going to continue going forward?
We only did that through March 1st, I believe, just to try to get us through especially those difficult months that we knew we were going to have, the winter months when we knew there would be a possible surge. And we let everybody know that this is just for these months, just for that increase.
Do we think that that made a difference in attracting talent per se?
Yes. I think we got who we were always getting anyway. I, I think we onboarded, and I can ask, do you recall, Mr. Art, how many we onboarded between January and March?
I don't, I know we have onboarded several new subs since I've started, and I don't know how many we did in January, but since I started in February. We do have a very low number of subs, I'll say that. You have your, I think there's 23 schools right now and there are 16 subs, the designated subs. And then I think actively you maybe have 50 to 60 subs for all schools, so. I, I do know that the schools struggle in getting substitute teachers, there are some schools that struggle a lot more than others, so.
Another consideration we have to do, whatever our going rate is for a general purpose sub in this line, SMED has their own line for subs, they have to match that and they have limited funding, so if we say we're going to increase that number per sub, we'd have to go back and talk to Ms. Ventura and see how that's going to affect her budget as well. So it's, I can say, this year is just an off year, just, it just was incredibly off year when you talk about getting subs and, you know, generally, we start the year with 200, was my understanding at the beginning of the year, and we started with less than 100. And then a lot of them signed up, never showed up on top, on top of those.
No, go ahead, I'll, I need, yes, sir.
So, I'm kind of at a little crossroads with that one little thing. I mean, if, if $539,000 at our current rates not attracting anyone, I, I kind of am in a struggle to take anything away, but if we're not going to increase their sal, increase that line item to their, to their salary, I don't know what we're doing. I mean, it's kind of a moot point if we're going to take anything away or add anything to, but if we're not attracting anyone, I kind of struggle to put $500,000 in there to be honest with you. I would rather put like 200,000 and go from there and add to it if we need to, but if we're not going to increase what they're getting paid to attract people so that our teachers can actually have these subs in the class, so they're not having to cover two classes, I think we're just spinning our wheels. I don't know why we wouldn't try to attack, attract those teachers by increasing it permanently.
And, and I agree, you know, all we have to go off of, if you look back to the 1920 actuals, is that's kind of, kind of where you had to go to because this year was such an off year and that, and that's kind of where we, you know, said, here's our number, here's our mark, and then it's just so, with substitutes, I don't think it was, we weren't attracting because of pay, it was just, we had no, nobody wanted a sub in this climate this year because a lot of our subs are retired peoples and a lot of them just didn't feel safe, still may not even feel safe when we get into August. It's just one of those unknowns, and I hear exactly what you're saying. You know, we, we brought the money up, it still didn't attract, and it was very competitive and more competitive than most districts, and it still didn't bring in what we thought it, hoped it would, I won't say thought.
I don't think we were attracting in 2018, 2019 either, I don't think we were had full, full staff for subs then. So, I mean, unless we're going to talk about pay and making that a more permanent situation, I think we're putting money in here, that's going to roll into fund balance at the end, at the end of this budget unless we do something differently.
Speaking of fund balance, you know, you sent something to us about your estimate about what fund balance would be at the time, it seemed to me like at that point it was about 12 million. What do you estimate at this point it'll be at the end of June?
I estimate at the end of June it'll be around 10 million.
Around 10 million.
And our operations for this year are going to be at a small deficit. If we spend every single service dollar, supply dollar, set 500 and 700 line item budgets, which we rarely, rarely do, we are expected to be at about a $300,000 to $400,000 deficit. But what we usually do is we don't fully expend those and those end up rolling into fund balance, and we could see a small surplus there. Our surplus will not be as big as it has been in previous years though.
Okay, and being clear that, that when they're not spending these accounts, this money rolls into fund balance, it's money that was budgeted, not spent, not spent on teachers, not spent on textbooks, not spent on any of that stuff, rolls into fund balance. How much of that fund balance could we use for this budget if we need to?
I think you could comfortably use 1.5 million. At the same time though, we have to keep in mind as a school board and as superintendent that these are costs that will have to be replaced next year that are, and we have an automatic increase in our budget, you know, to maintain staff and pass a step raise. So, that's something to think about, that we would be hoping on more funding for following years.
But you're saying right now at 109, we're talking at six cents tax raise to fund that, so if, if that, if that would offset that, it's just something we need to keep in mind. Another thing, understand that, that the 1% or the 3% is not in this, okay? And I'm, I have a history on this board of when things disappear, they never come back. It's kind of the way it is. And, you know, like the last column on it, teachers, you know, and that's the one we obliterate, okay? And I know that you want to use the SR money, I don't have a problem with that, that's just $1,000. So, you and I talk coming in, I think others of us, we do feel like there's going to be money coming from the state. They promised a 4% last year, they also had, wanted a $38,000 beginning salary. Right now, our beginning salary is the lowest to be anywhere in Middleton City, 36,000. Closest to us is 38,9, 38,8, I think I sent that to you all, so I won't go over that. But we can't approve a budget till we know what's going to happen with the state, we just can't. Because I don't want that money to not be used in total for these teachers, I don't, again. And it has every year, every year. So I, I understand the SR and I'm thrilled that we've got that money and I support that entirely, I, I understand we need to get a budget and, and everything, but I just don't want the teachers to be left holding the bag. And then, that money that we didn't have to spend on them is going to end up in fund balance next year, and that's what happens, that's what happens.
Go ahead Doug.
The, the only thing that really requires us to, to get something through this school board before May 1st is the private act. And, and it doesn't have to be the final document, you know, we could, we can, we can attach a footnote to that, it can be amended after that, we just have to have something finished from this school board before May 1st, and then that has to get to the commission before June 1st, which their meeting is May 10th. So, and even if the commission kicks it back, we can make amendments to that and submit that, but the private act holds us to, to follow in those guidelines and, and when those funds, you know, become available, if they become available and it's recurring money for a raise, then we can add it to our budget when that occurs. Even if we pass a budget and then we foresee the revenue coming in, we can pass a raise at that time when it occurs, we can roll with the flow.
Okay, Mr. Lecan, I've got a, I want you to walk through with something with me, I'm obviously having struggles tonight for some reason. I'm looking at the two columns under the first page of expenses, the section we're looking at. You've got superintendent's cuts in the left-hand gold column, superintendent's request with 3% raise. How much is accounted for by that 3% raise?
2.4 million dollars flat, it's at the very bottom of the expenditure budget.
Okay. So, taking that number out of the right-hand column, the superintendent's request then becomes less than the superintendent's column with cuts? Am I off on that?
Yeah, it's, the total is 114.8, so if you brought it down.
No, 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 I'm just looking at this one segment of the budget, expenses. I'm looking at the 51,82107.
Oh.
That's not in that part of it?
No, no, the 3% raise is at the very bottom.
Okay, well that was, what was confusing me on that chart then, thank you very much. I'll quit looking like an idiot now. Ms. Parker?
Um, I know one of your cuts is to take money out of textbooks, can you explain to me what the 977,000 will cover and what it won't cover?
Right now, what we owe is about nine mil, excuse me, right now we owe about 950,000 for the remaining price tag of the ELA books. What we did was went ahead and took the allocation of, I think it's $78 per child from the BEP, and we just used that number to come up with the 977 to make sure we could cut, that, make sure we could cover the ELA expenses, and then we're looking at our SR3 to cover those lost textbooks, which Nick has run the cost on all those. And so we're going to have that ask into the SR3, and then the following year, you know, look to add, we'll be looking at math, and so that number will have to stay or increase.
Okay. So, so you're comfortable then with the 977 based off of enrollment, is how you came up with that?
Absolutely.
And that covers ELA completely?
That covers the remaining.
So we're not taking a step back on that?
No.
And then as far as the SR money for 3.0, we're going to get the adoptions that we have not gotten for the past several years, correct? Okay?
Yeah, it's about 3 million.
At least.
Yeah.
At least, yeah.
So.
We're not going to have teachers that don't. We're not going to have teachers that don't have curriculum next year.
Right. So...
They need to address.
The thinking of...
Well, and not only that, I want it to be addressed, but I also want us to have it so that we have these books before kids come on August 1st. If we can't do that, then I think that's where we need to really look at whether or not we should be cutting this money here just because these teachers need those books on August 1st, not...they don't need them September 1st.
And I agree, we do. But just to...there's just no way we can make that line stretched to 3.9 million. And I know you're probably saying, I'm not seeing that, but it's just...
I'm not. But what I'm saying is you guys have come to us with S R 1.0, S R 2.0, and now you're getting to S R 3.0, and it's like an afterthought.
Okay.
I mean, that's kind of concerning for me.
Well, the S R 1.0 and the 2.0 really, I mean, they weren't even 3 million put together. So, this 18 million really opens the doorway for us to be able to make sure we can cover all of that. So, that's the big reason now we feel comfortable with having that 18 million dollars where before when we only had, I think it was 2.4, put together for both of them. So, this way be able to do that. The timing of it...
But we did bonuses, right? We did bonuses?
Correct, ma'am.
We did bonuses?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. So, when we talk about teachers, let's just remember...
Right.
We did bonuses, but we didn't think about textbooks and curriculum for teachers to have to make them successful.
Absolutely. And, you know, we have been thinking about textbooks. We, you know, we talked about it, you know, when we brought up the initial, when we asked for the 1.5, we started buying into other areas that we needed past that, what we paid on the front payment of the ELA. So, we've been trying to address that as we go as well. And this just gives us...opens the door where we can just say that box is checked, they've got it. We can, as we move forward, make sure this line is always funded to keep up with our adoptions.
Well, and that's my concern is because like Ms. Kinzer said, once it goes, it doesn't come back.
Right.
I mean, I want to say when I came on this board, we got down to, what, 300,000 on textbooks? And it's taken a long time to get up to 1.4 million?
Right.
And to take a step back when we already know that we don't have what we need, I mean...
And I'm the guy sitting here telling you. I come from the, we've got to have curriculum in teachers' hands, and I will always fight for that line to make sure we have it there.
Yes, but we just bought a bunch of devices and things like that, too.
We did.
So, I mean, you have to prioritize, and I'm just telling you, that's where my priorities lie. So, if that's where your priorities lie, I appreciate that. We can align on that, but that wasn't what you brought.
Right. Look, I'm sorry?
On S R 1.0 or 2.0.
Right.
And you weren't here for 1.0, but...
So, you know, I did...
Instruction was.
And I had that, and I was going to address that line while we cut it. And that was because we went to the allocation of the 78 per, and that's how we got the 977. And moving forward, we know that line's probably going to almost have to double once we get to the math adoption because it's not going to be as costly as the ELA adoption, but it's probably your second most costly after ELA. So, I agree with you. I agree with a lot of these. It's cutting me to the bone having to cut some of these lines because I'm scared they won't come back. And but we're...and I hate to use this word, but I feel like we're in crisis. We've got to get this budget cut down. And, you know, I was asked to start looking at positions, and for four solid days, I've been calling it the war room. That's all we've done is go through every line and start cutting and cutting. Where can we cut without being so harmful that it's just going to come back to us? The other thing I did want to bring up is, you know, because of the private act, you know, this is making us have to fast forward. We don't even have our BEP projection yet. That doesn't happen until mid to late April. So, we're, unlike most districts that aren't under, they wait till they get that, but we can't because of the private act. And we're hoping that that bill passed that I've been putting in my email for the Hold Harmless, we really need that to pass to help us to make sure we stay on course with the budget we have in front of us. So, I just wanted to make that...be aware of that because if you know people from other districts, some have started, some haven't. That's why people are all over the place, but we have to just because of the private act.
Two other questions, or two other line items. If you can just explain what's in them. The 499, other supplies and materials, what else included in that?
Because I know I've asked this question. We're looking...we're thinking it's the allocation we give bands.
I think we took that allocation divided by the number of students that were in high schools and middle schools and gave them a band allocation. And we haven't done that. So, we allocated that out to them. It's not much money. I mean, it'll buy an instrument, but we allocated out based on their enrollment.
Yeah, yes, 71.
Obviously, though, they...
Yeah. Band allocation.
Well, the question I've got is, how come we haven't hit the 35307?
It's not expended yet. I mean, we will push...it went out to schools, so schools know they have until, what is it, May 15?
Oh, May...
Yeah. They have to spend that allocation. So, we'll continue to do reminders to them that they need to spend those allocations. Otherwise, they roll back the fund. They know that, that they have to expend those funds.
Okay. Well, because last year we didn't spend it all, and I know that that's partly because of COVID, but at the same time, if we have...
I don't know if last year it was allocated. We tried to look at it. And this year, when we did allocations, we just made sure it was allocated out to schools.
It's as the original budget it was.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I guess that's my question is, will they actually spend all of the 35307? Because it looks like the most they've ever spent is 24,350. I'm reading that right.
I mean, it goes out to schools and they're supposed to spend it. I mean, we can push them to spend that allocation, but if they...I mean, they would just have a reduced allocation if it's cut, you know? But we try to allocate it out to the schools for...
Well, I guess I'm just not real clear. I mean, you said it's for bands. So, are we basing that off of each band? I mean, what exactly are we hoping to get from that? Is that going towards uniforms? Is that going towards instruments? Is that going towards instructors, lessons? I mean, just give me an idea.
It's an allocation to the band teacher or the bands for their use. They buy sheet music, as you can tell by the purchases, they buy sheet musics. Some of them may buy one instrument. I mean, it's not a whole lot of money.
So, this isn't like Quaver?
No, Quaver refunded in textbooks.
Okay.
We're looking at other options to consider to get band instruments, but, I mean, that's something that we didn't bring at this time because it would, you know, it's a lot of money. But that's something I think Mr. Lane wants to bring to you later, something to talk about. But that would be...I know he has an option for band uniforms that he's going to talk to you next month on the...at the work session. Band instruments is another story, you know? It's a lot of money. But we're looking at, and Mr. Lane's been looking at options to bring to you is how we can do that.
Are you talking S R money for that potentially?
I mean, I don't know that...we haven't seen that we could use S R money for that. We don't know. I mean, we're trying to constantly look at what other districts have gotten approved, those things like that. So, we...Renee does a good job of, through her association, connecting with them, saying, what did you get approved? What is that? So, as we know that, we're thinking about those options as we move forward.
Okay. And then the other item is 722, the regular instruction equipment.
Okay. These are basically administrative equipment for the schools. It is their school allocation. So, it is already...checks have already been cut to put it in the school's hands to fully expend. If they don't, if they don't expend it, they have to return it back to the school district by June 1st.
Right. But he's monitoring these...I mean, if you give me $1,000 and tell me to spend $1,000, I can spend $1,000 at Amazon, too. I mean, so that's where I guess I'm coming from is when we start looking at these numbers and what we have budgeted, it's...I mean, it's very close to what our actuals are, but historically, that's not what we've spent. So, I assume either...so, did we increase it or did we...I mean, it looks like over time we have amended the budget to increase it. So, I was wondering if there was a big purchase that we're trying to make sure, like copying expenses that have gone up or contracts or things like that. So, it's just school by school?
The part...every school gets an allocation for the 722 line, and that's their funding. We have a BEP allocation sheet that divvies out the amount by school based on enrollment.
Okay.
So, based on the size of their school, they would get more or less funding from this particular line item. We have to follow our supplant, not supplement...or sorry, supplement, not supplant methodology in which we're giving the same allocation per student, per school. And so, it's allocated to those schools if they don't, you know, it is budgeted for. So, basically, and that's how it'll work next year. The school district will fully expend it, and then if the schools do not spend that money, they have to return it to the school district before June 1st. And so, if we get that in, we would code that refund back into our district budget, reduce it down from the full budget amount, and we'd have recognized savings in that line item.
Okay. But just as a part of this war room exercise that y'all have been doing, I mean, are y'all looking at these type of things? Because, you know, 8,000 here, 10,000 here, it all adds up when you go through each of the line items. So, I don't necessarily...I mean, I'm just asking if you guys are comfortable with these numbers or if you feel like there's any cushion...I mean, we all do budgets with cushion, and it's...it's there. People are saying they don't want to cut positions, so it doesn't really leave a lot of other places to look at cutting. So, y'all are comfortable with these numbers?
Yes. Like, those you're calling out, to be honest, I wish we could give more to schools, but we can't because that's basically giving them money to help with their operation budgets. So, that way, they don't have to do all the fundraising, all the other things that go with it. So, looking at these numbers, we have looked at all of them. And some of them, you'll see that our cut, like 25,000 or 15,000 as we go through because we wanted to go ahead and backtrack and try to, you know, pinch every penny we could. And you will see that in some of these numbers when you see the comparisons.
So, going back to like what I've asked for for six years is what does it cost to operate a school? And like, these are the numbers that are being, you know, and I'll just be honest with you, and it's not...it's not you, Mr. Higman, and it's not you, Doug. But when I talk to people, they're like, they're really good at hiding things. So, I don't know what y'all are hiding, and it's really hard. But at the same time, I know that there are hidden costs in here. So, we're trying to like shave some things down. That's where I just really need y'all to help us know what the impact is going to be if we take some of this money away, particularly for those things that are allocated to certain schools. But when it's not broken down per school, it's really hard to see how this impacts kids.
And I've got payroll costs by school. I've got every individual human being in every single building, what their benefit cost is, what their salary cost is. We have received a budget from every single school based on their enrollment as how they were funded. So, everyone's funded at the same amount per child as the enrollment is projected to be in that school for next year. And we have their supply costs. The only thing that is not earmarked is basically taking a cost that every single school has. For example, divvying things out that every school gets by 22, that is really a district-wide cost. For example, a software like Edgipoint, for example, it's a student information system. The whole district uses it. Basically, take that, divide it by 25, and we can get that. It takes some time, but, you know, you can have every single dollar at every single school. I don't...it's not something that's impossible to do.
You might have just...
But yeah, the fundraising at the local school and the books at the local school, that's under the principal's watch. That's per the internal school's accounting manual. The principal is the purchasing agent of that school for those funds and really for any funds that run through the school. And if...there is really no hiding of it. Those are audited funds. It rolls into their fund balances. Their fund balances are reported on the Comptroller's Office website. If there are funds that don't go through and don't get recorded, you know, that would be the only thing that would come up, you know, is basically things that aren't being run through the school that are alternative funding sources. Usually, that's through boosters.
All right. I think you may have eased...softened my next question a little bit. I don't want to go down this path and spend a lot of time on it, but I do want just a cursory yes or no type answer. I'm looking at this 32791634 salary for teachers. Those are classroom positions? Okay. So, if I were to ask you, if we closed the second grade at school X and eliminated those positions, you could give me an updated number because we know exactly how many teachers are included in this line item? I don't want to spend a lot of time on this one, but I'm just wanting to know, are we that?
Yes.
In your little war room?
Yes.
You've got it down to that nuts and bolts? Okay. Well, then you've eased my mind a little bit with that.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So, you could tell...we could take all the teachers in this line item and put a label on who or where they're at, what room, not necessarily their dames, because that's not fair, but just...
Yes.
Second grade, class number one at Woodard is in this. Okay. All right. That...I think if that's what we've been asking for, at least of my understanding all along, and I...this is the first I've heard that we're at that point. So, I commend you and y'all's work on that. So, thank you. Mr. Lindsay?
Can you commend them after we get that information?
I was...
Because we've asked for it.
While I was...
Actually, at the budget meeting on Saturday, by the way, it'll be had.
Okay. Mr. Lindsay?
I just want to make a statement going back to what we were talking about, not knowing what our BEP allocation is yet. I text with Representative Supiki yesterday, asked him, was there...was there any and what amount of monies were included in the governor's budget for teacher raises? He replied to me that there was $200 million. So, I...and then my second question to him was, is that reoccurring money, not just one-time money? His answer to me was, I think so. So, I tried to figure out what $200 million means to Murray County, okay? And going back to January, I think when that legislation was passed, that was $43 million, roughly thereabout, and we got $537,000 out of that 43 million. I'm doing rough estimates that if we get that same percentage out of this 200 million, we'll be in the 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, somewhere in that range. So, I just tell you that just as a point of information. I text with him again today and said, when do you expect this budget to pass? And his reply was within the next three weeks. So, that going along with May 1st, hopefully, if they have no setbacks, before May 1st, we could have that BEP allocation. We can know exactly what those numbers look like, and then we could update those numbers. So, I just tell you that as FYI. Mr. Chairman, what kind of...are...do you want someone to make a motion to approve per category? How do you want to do this? Because I'm ready to if you are.
Is there any further discussion on this category itself?
Just one.
Go ahead, Ms. Serbin.
I know you've been in the war room, and we've talked. I'm just curious, and I don't know, and I missed the first minute or two. What is this cut to teacher? I mean, I know we've got to do what we've got to do, but what does it look like, like to our classrooms? What are we cutting? Are we cutting like certain?
What we did, we ran the maximum projection on each grade level at each school, and that's how we came with our numbers. So, we're looking at the maximum on...
So we're looking at the maximum on our middle schools and elementaries. High schools, what we had to take in consideration is we took the EIA numbers, and then we had to consider that, the retakes, because we're really concerned what those may look like by the end of the year, being a COVID year. So we had to kind of speculate on that one to say, what is our retake on courses, and what, what is that going to look like? So that's kind of what, what it is. We're looking at the max numbers that we can have per your, your, your groups of clusters of grades, and then per class.
And that would still get us within the appropriate band for the grade ranges?
Correct. The, the appropriate band for K3 is 20 with a class size of 20, 25. However, that cluster, when you hit 2.5, 20.5, you have to add additional teacher. And these are based off of the flat projections we gave you, and that's why I opened up and said, this is considering no growth.
And I'm sorry, I'm new to this, but we could make, if, because I fear that there will be growth. If that happens, can we modify it like later on to expand those? Is that how that works? And I'm sorry, I'm very green.
We can.
And I'll let Doug tell you the technical answer for when a county experiences growth and what that means for BEP. Where do you want me to? The technical answer is that they will take consideration of growth. However, we have to cover the first 2% of it with local funds, and then we don't get that check until February? February. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
So that's how growth is considered.
Right. Okay, thank you. I guess going back to Mr. Lindsey's question. Ms. Kinser.
I just had a question, piggybacking off that. Wouldn't the ESER funds be able to be used if we see growth in people coming back who left because of the pandemic, or as a result of it, to homeschool, whatever, that we can utilize ESER money to fund those positions that are needed to be added?
And I'm going to give you the cautionary answer. We've got to be careful, because in everybody's head, we've probably spent 60 million of that 18 million already. And so we have to be very cautious. We have, right, you could, but looking at other areas that we've talked about, like making sure we have the operations money, making sure we have these certain areas covered, we're, we're going to run thin. That 18 million's going to be spent really quickly, and that's one of the things that I know Eric's in the back of the room, and we've been talking about, you know, what we can do for the HBAC systems, and that, being part of that ESER 3.0, which, that does need to be a discussion with the board. We, once we get where we know for certain what the rules are for 3.0, we need to bring it to possibly the April 20th work session, if we can, to say, here's our ideas, here's where they're at, we've taken your ideas into account, we listened to what you said, we know what we're going to need to help try to balance this a little bit, too.
One last point. When you all have cut these positions, you will use retirement and positions so that we're not talking about...
Correct. And we call it, we're using positions that are leaving the system.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. I guess our question then as a board is how to proceed with this information, because obviously, we've got to start approving and disproving some things. Are we comfortable moving this 49, you moved it on me, 49, 669, 573 number on to the, would we go next to the full board meeting to vote on it officially at that time? Is that the way you see it, Mr. LaConan? Is this a board consensus? Because I don't know that we technically have to vote on it at this time. I don't know if we actually can, can we? I didn't think so. So it'd be more of a consensus like we do with the consent agenda items that we move?
Right. My, my understanding is how this is going to work, since it's a committee, as we will be.
We've never had committees since I've been on this board, so I don't know.
You talked about it, this is just consenting that we're okay to send this to the full board meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Lindsey? Because you brought that up.
Okay. Well, then, then let's do it like this. I will go ahead and just say, are we ready to vote as to this number, moving it on to the full school board meeting as a part, as this segment of the budget? Is that accommodating for everybody?
I'd like to reduce 198 by $50,000, and then I'm fine with it.
Any other discussion on that item? Can, yeah, go ahead, and could you do that and give us the new number? Do we have a consensus to make that reduction on behalf of the board? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Give me the yeses on reducing this 50,000. Raise your hand if you're a yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Noes? One, two, three. We're going to go ahead and reduce that by 50,000. What does the new number come to? Okay. We'll go ahead and take a vote on this. All in favor, say aye to this new number. Aye. Any opposed? One opposed, two opposed? We're going to send this on to the full, or to the regular board meeting then. I'm just kind of winging it, because I don't think we've ever actually done it like this before. So if anybody does have a huge issue with the way we're proceeding, let me know. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we actually did knock out half the budget at that point. All right. Next, we're... But not half the deficit. Are we ready to move forward? Let's do it. Now, let me ask a question before we go to that next point. Mr. LaConan, you keep saying the May 1st number. That's in the private act. If we moved this and actually did a little more work on it and voted on it at our May 4th meeting, but still had it by the county commissions meeting on the 10th, would that result in audit finding?
Uh, yes, because you as a board have to get it to me by May 1st.
And then you have to turn around and get it to them by the 10th?
Yeah.
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you very much.
Next, uh, next, next segment.
Okay. The next segment we're looking at is 71150. That is our, I believe, our alternative schools. Nothing changed there, because we know we need it to maintain where it's at. What you do see is increased by step raises. That is the only increase that you do see there.
Okay. Any discussion? I've got one thumbs up on this one so far. Anybody want to make a motion to have more discussion? Got a motion for Mr. Lindsey? All those in favor of moving it on to the full board, uh, school board meeting, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're good with this part of it. Nope, we got one objection, sorry. Mr. Moore. Is that a no vote, or you want to talk about it more? Okay. Next segment then.
The next segment we're looking at is 71200. This is our special education, special populations area, so I've brought Ms. Fittin Ture to come up, because it did have this increase, and I'd like to, for her to speak about the increases and why.
Roughly $800,000 increase, is that kind of what I'm, I'm following here?
Yes, off the top of my head, yes.
All right.
And most of those are...
No, that's just for clarification, that's not a commentary. Go ahead.
No, most of those are step raises. Both the teachers and the EAs get step raises. As you go through the budget, the FTEs remain the same for the 116, the 128. The 116, obviously, being teachers. I had 100 and, 100 FTEs budgeted last year. I will remain with 100. Homebound teachers, I have one in the 128 line item. The 163 line item is educational assistance. In that line item, I am requesting 10 additional educational assistance. That is for multiple reasons. The first one being the teaching position that is currently at McDowell will be transferred to Battle Creek Middle School, where we will open a CDC classroom. When we opened up Battle Creek Elementary School, we opened up a CDC. There are five children and two that are actually, that remained at Marvin Wright, that will go to Battle Creek. So we'll open that classroom with seven students. So two of those 10 FTEs will be educational assistance at Battle Creek Middle School in a CDC setting. The other eight, you know, here's where y'all throw the arrows, the other eight are a cush, but here's why. As Kristen Parker has brought up multiple times, you know, school board policy 5.16, I have to budget those positions ahead of time. For those of you that are familiar with special education law, at any time, I could have 10 children with autism, I could have them show up tomorrow that all have one-on-ones in their IEP. I can't wait to come to you for a work session, then a board meeting, and beg for money out of fund balance. So that is what I typically do. I typically add between eight and 10 FTEs to that every year. I also, just, just so you know, pulled some numbers, if I can find them. Last year, I gave back to fund balance over $352,000. And the year before that, I gave back $217,000 to fund balance. So I hope that you find that I'm fiscally responsible. I don't take that money and move it around. If the EAs are not used, you do get it back, but they do need to be accounted for ahead of time. The other addition to that budget, you will find in 189. 189, please understand that that covers my extended school year, and that covers sign language interpreters. I have two children that need sign language interpreters. Actually, I, I will have five children that need, need sign language interpreters. Three, I'm asking for to come out of the general purpose budget. You currently pay for two, so that is an additional one FTE, and then two come out of my federal funds. And I'm pretty confident that I can pay for the additional, I need two more for next year. I'm pretty confident I can pay for one out of federal, and I'm asking you to pay for the other one.
Thank you, that's very informative. Go back to, to the education assistance you were talking about, the six to eight that have been added? Is it six or eight? I mean, eight or 10? Wasn't it eight to 10?
It's 10 additional FTEs.
Okay.
Two are accounted for to go to Battle Creek Middle School.
Okay.
The eight are...
Out of those 10, the eight are the others.
Exactly.
That could be needed.
Correct. And, and what I typically do, and I think most of you are aware of this, as I need one-on-ones, in order to keep that supplement, not supplant, I'll do like, you know, if, let's just say, a child shows up at Baker that needs a one-on-one, I'll take that one out of federal. Then the next one shows up at Cullyoka, I take that one out of GP, and I try to balance it that way. You know, I try to always go back to federal if I've got it there, but just in case I don't, I would not be able to come to you and, and ask you in a timely manner for those.
All right, I'm going to ask you some nitpicky questions, not to pick on you, but just to make Mr. Hickman feel better about himself. You, you've got this budgeted, and you've, you've explained it very well. How many do you have now that have individual EAs in their IEP?
That's a difficult question to answer, because some of them only have one-on-ones for three and a half hours, or, but full day one-on-ones, I believe we are sitting at 41.
Okay. And you feel like the number that you budgeted would provide with what you need?
Absolutely, absolutely. Especially with the addition of federal funds.
I do appreciate your fiscal conservativeness. I, I think that's a, a very good quality. I do think also that realistic budgeting is important, too, and I think just hearing what you've described, you've kind of hit a fine balance with that. So as much as I want to say we've overbudgeted, take some of it back, if we're getting some back every year, I know that this is an area that's extremely legally regulated, and I don't want to be the one to make that call, quite honestly, because I don't want any legal ramifications coming. I do think it's very needed and, and very important. Are there any other discussion items, Mr. Hickman?
And I do want to add, and I had it wrote down to talk about, is on that teacher line on the 7100116. That included the five ELS for her as well. That did include five additional of those positions, and that is to keep us in compliance, and we're still, even with those five, are going to be a little short on that. So if you want to speak about that as well.
Okay.
Yes, in the 71100116 line, you know, aside from special education, that is where my ELL teachers reside. We currently have 21 ELL teachers. The BEP funds 29.9. They're pretty strict about the, that's a 1 to 20 ratio. I am asking for five additional, which will bring us to 26. I do think that that population, if, if you look over time, it is obviously a transient population, so I feel very confident that 26 will keep us legally compliant without, you know, the other three. You know, just if you look at our averages over the last couple of years, we, we tend to stay, right now, we're sitting at over 650, but typically, we stay between 550 and 599. So I, I think 26 will do us just fine.
Okay. Ms. Urban.
I'm just going to say motion to approve.
Okay. We got that. Ms. Parker, do you have more discussion?
Um, I did. So just to clarify, though, the five ELL teachers are actually in the previous section that's already been accrued by the board, right?
That's correct.
So, so knowing that information now has no impact on this part of your budget?
You are correct.
It might have been helpful previously before we voted on the report.
Correct. I, I stood up, and then I was like, I think they know, but so, I apologize, and I did not punch the microphone.
Sorry, I don't.
Also, just, Mr. Fulbright, just so you know, I was in your head, because I cut my subs $10,000.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for your information there.
Well, and one other question, on the instructional supplies and materials, how are you balancing that, when it looks like you're, you're budgeting 40,000, but you have at times spent way over that? So are you comfortable with that number, and how are you getting there in other parts?
What I try to do with the general purpose budget is keep my known costs in there. Things that I absolutely know are going to happen, I bring to you. The unknown weird, I need a Rifkin chair, I need a wheelchair, I need a, a stander. Those are what I, I try to keep a little federal money set aside for. So my instructional materials and supplies, that money is down to the penny as far as it pays for the BEP, for the $200 BEP that every teacher gets. So it pays for 101 teachers' BEP. And then it pays for the paper that we contract out, that you always get that big bill for in September.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this segment of the budget? All those in favor of moving it forward to our board meeting, say aye. Any opposed? You are good. Thank you. I kept looking at Moore waiting for his answer. All right. Next, uh, next segment. Mr. Hickman, will you take us to the next one?
Uh, Dr. Brown's going to cover the next section, but I do want to say, as we get started, in 71300116, it includes six teachers, five of those are technology or STEM teachers that are in middle schools, and one of them is a technology teacher that's in an elementary school. As we've looked at how we received our funding this year, because those students, they serve seventh and eighth grade, in some cases, they serve other grades, because they were funded in CTE out of that line, we found out that we weren't receiving as much credit for funding, because they weren't actually receiving CTE hours. So we need to move those teachers out of her budget to the 116 line, so that way, that doesn't, she can maximize her funding. So we will do that adjustment. You want to, we're not adding funds to the budget, we're just adjust, we're going to adjust the 116 line for those six teachers to move them to the GP budget. And, and Dr. Brown can explain further if needed, and then she can talk more about her budget.
And we do receive more funds for CTE than just regular purpose, general purpose. So in my budget, you will see that there is a little bit of an increase. The increase there was for the request for the five new positions, but I, that will be moving over, and then step increases, and then a small amount of it will be for increases that we know will come in charter buses and things that we have to get, because they travel during school hours, and it runs into school hours that we, we just can't use. When we can use a regular school bus, we do. So...
Any?
Sorry. You said that, didn't you?
You said that did include some growth positions for your program, correct?
No, well, actually, it will be six that we will be moving to the high school, but those six that we're taking from middle and then the one elementary, it's five middle and one elementary, we would be taking those to the high school in which we would be fully funded.
Okay, so basically, middle and elementary are losing those positions, but our high schools are gaining them, correct? Did I understand that right? Okay.
So, okay. And we have to look at three different areas when we're looking at the CTE. We look at ADM, but it can be a little misleading because our dual enrollment, all of our teachers that teach dual enrollment, in which we're held accountable for, by the state, for ready graduate. Now, that doesn't, I mean, we want our kids to be ready graduates. That doesn't hold them back from graduating, but it does reflect on us in our scores that we receive from the state. So every student must be a ready graduate to graduate, or for us, on our accountability. Our dual enrollment, which meets that ready graduate status being the EPSo's, the dual enrollment, statewide dual credit, the industry certs, and those type of things. Our teachers teach that, but those course codes are different course codes, so it doesn't reflect in our ADM. But we don't look just at ADM. We also look at class size and pursue it to Tennessee Code Annotative 49-1-104. Our school average cannot be any higher than 20. Our class sizes cannot go over 25. This year, they have somewhat, but it's only because they're giving us a waiver because of COVID. Okay? So we, I look at all three of those things throughout the school year, the ADM, the school average, and the class numbers.
And I'm sorry, I have a question about, because what I know, I know a lot of different areas, but I do know the rural area schools, too. Are they gonna be hit, like losing teachers? Are they gonna have similar opportunities for them? I'm just curious how that works, because I know one of the unit schools, for sure, lost in this area last year. And we have, actually, we have experienced cuts for the last three, four years. And right now, Hampshire and Santa Fe are sitting fairly well. If they lose a position, though, we'll be out of compliance. So it would put us over that 20 average. So we must leave them where they are. Calioka needs an additional teacher based on their school average. Columbia Central High needs two to meet their school average. Mount Pleasant needs one. Spring Hill High School needs two. They're that much over.
So this is why we're moving them around?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And we will earn full ADM on these. Anything less than seventh grade, we do not earn ADM. So those teachers that are at the middle school, we earn it on seventh and eighth grade, but nothing lower.
Won't pick on subs, since everybody else has. Notice, to date, number, we only spent $393 this year.
There's a reason.
But I'm just making the statement first. And then, but we budgeted $20,500, and then we go over to our actuals of 1920, and we just spent 10 in 1920, so.
Okay. So our budgeted subs, and I believe it's $1,000 on the certified, I wish we didn't do that. I wish we just had one lump sum there, and maybe we can get that worked out. That has not changed, that was that amount when I started this position in 2015. Basically, what that covers, in a normal year, our teachers are doing competitions and events with the students, and we would need that. What we've used it for this year is to do even virtual training. They can't teach and do virtual training all day. I have tried to do three or four meetings at one time, and it's really difficult. So, you know, to teach a class plus to do training, so we have used some, but not all. Next year, however, we're already starting back with our ag department and our human services. They will start going back in June to competitions. Of course, our teachers are out in June, so you won't see a charge for a sub. But come July, August, when they're starting to go back into competitions, we will utilize those subs. That's why it wasn't all used, but we did utilize that for training, additional training for teachers, trying to get ahead of the game there.
But just looking at raw numbers, going back three years, actual audit numbers, 18, 19, $6,800 out of 20,000. That's in the non-certified. In the certified, you only spent $640 out of the thousand. The 1920 actual audit numbers, $10,394, and the budgeted $20,500.
Okay, so the...
We've never spent more than half of that.
The 1920, most of our events happen in March, April, May?
But 18, 19, COVID didn't happen.
Correct. And I don't know why that's there, because I do believe we expended every bit of our sub money there. Oh, yes, I do. Our sub company did not, did not charge us for our subs that year. They went through GP, and our money got moved back into GP. Parallel. Yes, sir, thank you. That was it. So our money, the remainder of that money was moved into GP to cover our subs because they did not differentiate between CTE, yes, and SPED, and, yes, so that was why. But the main reason last year that it did not cover the entire amount is because most of our competitions happen, the district and local district, meaning school-wide and going within the district to the other, to the six high schools. Normally, that's between July and the February date. Our state and nationals start in March. Pretty heavy, but now, last year with COVID hitting, we weren't allowed, well, goodness, we weren't even in school, so.
Line item 336.
336.
Seems like the budget went up, in this current year, we're in quite a bit above what it had been the last two, and we hadn't expended at its max in the last two.
336, maintenance and repairs? Yes, because we were doing some catch-up on maintenance work there. I can get you a list of those things, but I was...
But my question is, there's $21,000 in it this year, and to date, we spent $2,400 out of it, so.
It's in the process of being spent for putting the greenhouses, electricity and water in to bring those in, as well as some of our classroom maintenance that we were doing, besides the maintenance on equipment that will come during spring break and at the end of the school year, because we don't usually do those things while the kids are in the classroom.
Line item 524, kind of the same thing. It has hovered around $15,000 or $17,000. Never expended anywhere near that, but it's bumped to $27,200 this year.
And that will be because most of, well, not most, most all of our training is during the May-June time frame. And anything that's not used goes back, rolls back into GP.
And what comes out of 599?
599, that's going to be, hold on, I wrote it down here. That will be the cost for teacher training. We do, that offsets some of our industry certifications that the children, the students earn. Those cost anywhere from $25 a piece up to $250. It just depends on what the industry cert is.
I was just gonna ask, and I don't know if I missed something, but all that stuff in P, how do we get access to that?
That's the comments column. We can upload...
The very...
I don't know if it's on the board document, but this is the rolling document. It was, but it's not now.
So you mean it's legal size again?
And then all of my textbook, like the list of textbooks, that will be taken off of there, because that will be included in the textbooks with the SR3 points.
I've been keeping it pulled up, up here. I can upload a new document if...
Or can you just email it to us?
Yeah. I can email it to you right now.
And I'm sorry, I'm really confused on the six teachers. Does that mean that your number here is gonna go down by six teachers, or this number is correct?
They will be taking my, well, the middle school and the one elementary. Last year, Dr. Woodard decided that the one elementary at Woodard needed to be added to CTE because it was technology. Unfortunately, we don't earn any money on them. GP can.
Okay.
But CTE cannot. Unless they're seventh grade or higher, we cannot earn any ADM funds toward CTE. Right.
And I understand that, but I'm saying, so are the numbers on here correct? And they were already added into the GP? So to the 7100, so the one that we already approved? Okay, just checking.
Would it be a wash?
That number, the 7100, does not increase by adding those. It is what we showed you it is.
So that it just will be an overall reduction of whatever this number comes down? It won't technically be a wash. It'll be a reduction?
It'll be a reduction. It's a reduction. What happened was, and I can only speculate, was last year, when they said they were gonna make cuts, they cut the CTE, but what they did was take those teachers and turn the GP positions into CTE. And the problem with that is she doesn't get credit on those being in the middle schools, so it puts us out of our ratio.
Okay. Let me just ask a quick question. I know this is titties.
Okay, that one line, the 336 that you're talking about, the 23, and you wondered why it came up so much? I wrote a grant for the AWS welding and received $25,000, and that's where that was stored. Correct. Right. So, and two, we've written another one for Santa Fe. That one was for Mount Pleasant High School. And unfortunately, when those funds roll in, because this happens with our dual enrollment grant as well, when we have these agreements with the TCATs in Columbia State, those, that the funds come in, but it's to offset boosting those programs, so we're supposed to be teaching a college-level course. And of course, our BEP funds and our general funds pay for that, for a high school program. So to boost that, they give us a portion of the student dual enrollment grant, only half. That's about all we could work out with them to give us. So those funds come to us, in order to keep a paper trail, we put them in our line, so it looks like our lines go up, but they actually, as soon as it gets into there, then we cut a check to the school, put it in the teacher's account so that we can account for how it's spent. Therefore, it's spent for things that will boost their dual enrollment classes, their programs at the school level. I mean, they can't put it in their pocket, basically.
Go ahead.
Dr. Brown, the way that you do your budget is essentially, then you're writing grants, and then you're also getting other money that's coming in. So what you have in here, is it all covered by the revenue that you, that you're accounting for, or is there any, what part is local, I guess, that we're covering? Do you know?
I would have to go in and see. I know that $25,000 is in there because we have to house it somewhere. Otherwise, it would have been the $6,500 each year, so above and beyond would be that amount of money. Some of that went to maintenance and repairs, to upgrade the ventilation systems. It went to purchase the equipment that we needed for that welding program to be able to be functional. We had welding there at one time. I only say we. Mount Pleasant had welding, so did Central and many others. But over the years, those things were dismantled and taken out as programs morphed into something else, and basically, we're adding that back to the ag programs.
Okay, so then, the CTE...
But to answer your question, I would have to pull each one of those grants and figure out which line it went into, that the finance department put it into for us to operate on.
Well, and I guess in general, I'm just trying to get a feel for...
And two, those grants are completely earmarked for things that they designate, not something that I can say, okay, I'm gonna use it on this to cover this cost, or this to cover. Usually, it is things, there are things that normally would not, I would not purchase. They're gonna be to boost extra equipment, but my equipment line is just basic equipment, trying to worn-out equipment, replace those type of things.
Okay. So then you're not necessarily accounting for all that you're expecting to get in on certain grants? Is that true?
And those grants may be zero.
Right.
I mean, I really...
So you're not accounting for that part in revenue?
It's just icing on the cake if I can get them. But it's time, writing those grants.
Right.
And then, two, if we can, a lot of them require matching funds, so the matching, the funds that I've received for the equipment, then I have to make sure that I have those earmarked in our GP account and things like that. So it's an ordeal.
I can see that. I can see that. In general, though, you said that CTE, things have changed over time. I guess, for you and for Director Hickman, is this the direction that you feel like we can sustain for a period of time with CTE? Or are there changes that need to occur in CTE?
With those positions that will be switching out from the middle school to the high school, and that's not saying that they'll do away with the middle school, I'm not saying that, but the positions that we will be adding, they will have us aligned with the Murray-aligned report that was just put out, as well as the Drive 55, Drive to 55 report that required us to become in alignment. To show you how much we are in alignment, 19, which is about half of our programs, are now certified pathway because we are aligned. And hopefully, the other half will be by next time, this time next year.
So total FTEs added for you, is it?
It would be zero because the full-time teachers that they will be taking into the 7100 line.
Well, and I'm asking because, you know, when I went through that document that y'all provided me, it was plus two for high school. And I didn't, so it looked like total, it was two additional ones for, or it was one additional one, I think, for Central and one additional one for Spring Hill. So is that accurate?
I have five middle school and one elementary. When they go there, I will have the, those positions will then become to meet our out-of-compliance issues for high schools. Do you wanna, I mean, I can give you, there are two at Central...
Well, now, I have a school breakdown that they provided me at the last meeting, so that's what I'm trying to square up in my head, it's just that...
Two at Central, one at Calioka, one at Mount Pleasant, two at Spring Hill.
Okay. But then, all the CTEs that were there at the middle schools, they're gonna...
That will be under 7100.
Okay. But they weren't listed under 7100, they were listed under CTE when you gave us that document, right? Yeah. So the, the projected number that we talked about at the last board meeting, in general, when you look at the CTE allocations, and it did include middle school, even though it sounds like you're saying those teachers are actually being moved to high school, they were still accounted for at each of the middle schools. And then there was an additional two teachers total for the high schools, one at Central and one at Spring Hill, so an additional two teachers for CTE was the way that I was looking at it. So an additional two teachers for CTE was the way that I was looking at it.
The number, her number does not change now. And like I said, we've gone through, and I see what you're saying, it didn't add up, the numbers you've got. So we'll get those to you guys, those numbers for each one of them.
Well, and this is where I go back to, everything that you give us, it needs to be supported by this. Because I'm assuming that you guys gave us those numbers to inform this document. But if those numbers don't inform this document, then I don't know which one I need to approve. Because I thought part of what we were also going to do was to approve a certain number of people at each school.
We did, and that's, that's where I was telling Mrs. Irvin, where we went back and recalculated with the max numbers to make, to see where we could take those additional cuts.
So you need to revise that document.
Right, because the first one was on the minimum cuts, what the minimum ratio, like just the 1 to 20. So we bumped it to the maximum class size that we could have without getting any, you know, pushback from the states and you're out of compliance. So once we did that, that's where we came with these extra positions to be able to say, hey, we now have these extra ones, we'll be able to say, we can cut a position here now where before with the minimum we couldn't. With the CTE, we, whoever put them in middle school, I can't tell you why or how that happened. I don't know, but the problem with putting them in there was they don't count for her in her ratios. So we have to get those back to her. So part of the 24, yes, we could have said 29, but we went with 24 because we flipped those back to the GP budget. Does that make sense?
It's clear as mud to me.
Okay.
A clarification. The, and I'm not going to pick on $10,000, but I am curious. The 524 line item that went 15,000, 15,000, an actual 17,000 is now sitting at 27,000. What accounts for that other 10,000 increase, anticipated increase?
We have a list of training that we have been getting, actually, we weren't able to get this year because it was virtual. Our precision measurement instrument certification with the Snap-on Precision Measurement Kit, not kit, but it's a tool cart, and it's all measurement, tape measures, calipers, those things. That's approximately $6,500 for that training.
Just looking over, you know, going back to the very first record that was budgeted at 15,000. So it's an almost doubling of the training that's going to be taken by the staff.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Of course, they haven't been able to train for a year and a half.
Yeah, and I'm not even counting that, you know, 2,600 we spent. I'm talking about 15,000 from 19 and 20. Okay, thank you. That answered my question. Mr. Lindsay.
All right, make sure I'm understanding. There's a $320,000 increase in the 116 line item.
That includes our step raises and for those five positions.
No, I thought the five positions were going to his budget. All right, so we're fixing to take five FTEs out of 71-300-116.
We're going to take them out of that, that, we're going to take them off of the 71-300-116, but they don't get added anywhere.
So we're, so we're gonna, if we're, if the FTE is $60,000, we're fixing to reduce this by $300,000.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. We're about to reduce this.
I'm supposed to call on myself since our chair left. I am still baffled at this middle school CTE designation. So on the documents again that you guys gave us, these, right? You, have you seen these? These documents? Cool. About the schools. I mean, I'm just, I'm not just picking a school I came to. Battle Creek Middle School has a one CTE that was pulled out as we were looking at the calculations of the number of teachers. So you're telling me that is a person leaving there? They're going to be classified then. So then the teacher count goes up, right? Explain that to me then.
When we looked at how many teachers we actually could reduce, we looked at.
I'm not reducing. So we're actually, we don't have to make this as hard as, there was a number here of a teacher count that was on this page.
Right, right.
So if we do a minus one on the CTE count, there's a plus one in another line item because there's no teacher leaving the building, right?
But on the.
I don't, I just, yes or no?
No, yeah.
Okay.
It's not, we're not adding teachers.
I didn't say we were adding.
Yes, yes.
I don't know how to explain it. Can someone help me?
I think I know what you're asking is really it comes out to a net of zero. Because we're not adding a CTE, we're not taking away a teacher.
But then one of the other numbers on this page has to go up because the number of people in the building has not changed.
Right, the CTE one goes to zero. And then I'd have to look at.
But the overall teacher count in the building stays the same.
Yes, the overall teacher count will stay the exact same. So that's why I said.
I guess I, this speaks to the frustration we have as board members when we can't even get good information. I mean, when did, when did this part happen? Was this after this was sent to us or before?
After.
Okay.
This, this was after when we saw that she had asked for five. We went back in and said like, we need to do what's right, give her back her five so she doesn't have to ask and then take them in through our GP.
And also, she has been looking at, she's been noticing her funding has been decreased. And she's been trying to look at what's going on, there's a reporting. And that's when she found out that that was, that was one of the reasons why she's not receiving the full ADM was because of that. So that's why we made that change.
That makes sense. Any other lights or further discussion?
So y'all want me to go ahead and cut the five positions out of that right now? Yep, I'm cutting one down.
And to give us an updated number, yes. Can I do that with a motion to, Ms. Irvin?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Gaines, do you think, just to make things simpler, because for a good paperwork trail, whenever we get through all this, if you could just resubmit that document with the correct numbers? Just because I'd like to have it for future reference too of who's where.
I will, just remember, staffing numbers will change per school because we haven't completed out of zones. Some of those teachers will shift. Of course, we're going to shift numbers, but we would wait on, we'd have to wait on that out of zone number. I mean, we can give you a projection of what those numbers will be, but we're still got to go through out of zoning and all those, all those normal things that happen. And then we, you know, we'll have a better number, but then you also are going to go through the summer and we may get enrollment increases. But we can give you that number as of after the out of zone period is completed. And if, you know, of course, if there are any people that want to bring their out of zone case to you and y'all approve it and we have to make those changes, and that's what I'm saying. I'm just.
I mean, if I could speak to that, I mean, one of the things I've been asking for since this started, and it's fine at whatever point it is, but at some point, this board has to approve the number of positions that are in this district. So at some point, I think it would be coming on us to get a number. Y'all can pick when you give it to us here, but we need a number so that we can now have a starting point. And then we can track changes over time. I understand getting that first number is, we could pick a random spot. That's fine. But at some point, I think we need to have that number so we can then look at when it changes. Because right now, I don't have a clue. Y'all just moved five positions, took it from one place and put it, didn't put it anywhere else. And I'm okay with that somehow, which I'm not sure how. But do you see the problem we're at? Because there's, there's no way as a board member for me to even understand, because I don't know the starting point. So whichever point that is, whether that be in the spring, after you guys clean up, I know we just opened up the enrollment for that out of zone, whatever point, let's, let's pick one, let's give us a number. Let us approve it as a board and then we can move on.
And I'm not going to say this to be snarky, but it's going to sound very much so. I was told about 45 minutes ago that there was a definite number in that first teacher line item of how many staff positions that entails. So we ought to have that number.
Well, I mean, you got that number, but also, you know, you've got vacancies, that number fills, so that.
I'm just, I'm just telling you. To answer, to address what he just said, that shouldn't take a whole lot of time because he told me it was there.
What we'll do, we'll get that document made up, spun up and get it to you. And, but we do want the asterisk to know that it may ebb and flow one or two here, but at least you'll have a starting point.
I mean, and I don't think anybody's saying, this is the budget and by George, we're not moving a single penny off of it. We understand things are going to ebb and flow, but we've got to have solid information to be able to have that starting point. And to then to rationalize that, well, there's growth. Okay, well, then we add.
We'll absolutely get those to you.
Ms. Irvin.
I'm sorry. I just had a thought that's probably going to create a multitude of bad things coming, I'm sure. But we just took $300,000 out of that line for teachers. Why can't we potentially reserve that? We've approved it technically for growth positions because they're probably coming. Did I miss that? Because we had $300,000 there that we just deducted. Am I wrong?
I think I'm still trying to address the deficit that we've got.
Oh, sorry. Never mind.
That's my, yeah, I'm honestly out of the roots. I'm just saying that's my assumption. Mr. LaConne.
We did present FTEs last meeting and meeting before, but after we make these cuts, we can get you a fresh document.
That'd be awesome.
All right, I have had a motion to approve this section as reduced. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, I was being too trusting of Doug. Yeah, and that's actually, that's what I assumed we were going to, yeah, Ms. Parker.
I was just going to say, when we get that projected enrollment, can we still continue to do it at the school level? I mean, I understand that adds up to a total number, but I still think that projecting it based off of whatever enrollment numbers we're using is beneficial. And obviously, if those numbers get adjusted, but that may mean that one teacher gets moved to a different school, not necessarily that we just add a teacher.
Ms. LaConne.
Okay, thank you. Can you give us the updated number? Okay, there's the update that has been requested. All those in favor of moving this as amended, as adjusted, I guess is a better phrase, to our regular board meeting? Say aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's move on then. 71-900.
Good evening. 71-900 is a safety grant and any safety associated cost to the 141. The safety grant is a minimum this coming year of $229,950. Anything that the governor does approve in addition, that number can only go up. Anything that we roll over from this year that we do not spend would be included in next year. This year, we rolled in $271,000 due to COVID happening and not finishing our programs over the course of the year this last year. So within that, 229,000 is grant approved and will come back to you. 278,950 total dollars, 49,000 of those come directly from the district. 16,000 is for the Raptor program that people, when you go to a school, you have to give your ID and it scans it, does the background check. $23,000 is for Navigate Prepared, which houses all of our safety documents, all of our EOPs. The state and all local law enforcement and fire departments have access to that in case of emergency. And then 10,000 goes to the ongoing K-9 program with the sheriff's department. But, but the bulk of that, right at $230,000, is reimbursed by the state.
Is that reflected in the revenue numbers anywhere?
It is.
Okay. Where, where is that, Ms. LaCone? I'm just looking for my own understanding. And if it's, if it's a hard search, don't, just tell me if you trust you.
I usually budget it when we actually get the grant, so it's not.
So it's not appearing in the revenue right now?
Right now.
That's fine.
But when we receive the grant, we'll bring you a budget amendment.
That's fine. That just helps me understand how we're looking at this then. Okay. Any other conversation regarding the safety? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve and move this on. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're at the next section. I don't see if we've never cut it on this, but.
That budgeted attendance, Mr. Lang.
Anything you would like to tell us about this?
Not necessarily. I would just take questions if there are any.
Discussions on the attendance portion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lindsay. I noticed in 335, it's always been zeroed out and then, what, 387,000? That I'm assuming is the maintenance of athletic facilities.
That is correct.
Any other questions, discussion? Have a motion to approve this for the attendance number. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? All right, good to go. Next segment.
Next is health services.
Okay, can you tell me the codes or the, what section this is? I'm, I've moved mine.
72-120. It'd be health services.
Okay, I'm a page off. All right. Do we have anybody to discuss this?
Mr. Poren is here to answer any question. I think only we have the, just the normal staff increases.
Okay.
The nurses that were approved throughout the year are also included in this line.
Okay, and just as a refresher, does this reflect one nurse at each school, at least one nurse at each school? Okay, for the record, I wanted to emphasize that we did make that effort. I think that was a big step on this board's part to make a commitment to the health of our students. And I wanted to make sure that, and even, even though we're talking a lot about things that need to be cut, this is one of the areas that we made an emphasis to really strengthen ourselves.
And I agree, this is one that the board requested and it showed back up into the budget, so we didn't touch that.
Thank you. Any, Mr. Lindsay?
Oh.
Have a motion to approve that on the end. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, Mr. Sims.
Hang on, I sent this to the secretary. It's been budgeted for a couple of times and not been filled. Is there any on 161? Or, oh, wait a minute. It's been. Let's see. That's, that's paid for with grant?
Yeah, paid for out of a grant.
There's, it's just, it's, it's, it's under zero actual this year is why I wasn't sure if it was filled or not, if there was a plan to fill it.
Yes, there's a plan. That, that's coordinated school health, because he told me who the person was. So the person that's over coordinated school health and then the secretary as well is covered through a grant. And so that portion of that is taken care of through a grant.
Yeah, then it shouldn't be budgeted, should it? If it's not being expended.
The position for this code is paid out of 189 and saying the position is paid out of that code. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't want to say names, but we have a list of every single employee in the GL they're paid out of. Currently, for this fiscal year, there has not been a person paid out of this GL. But the funding for that, you can see that really the 189 line is tracking to be over expended. And so I think that there's a position in this line that is needing this budgeted amount. And it's just been coded to the 189 rather than the 161 line item. I can pull that information. I can pull those employees. But for this fiscal year, it, it looks like there's an additional personnel that should be coded in the 161 line rather than the 189 line item. And I can give that position.
Okay, well, I understand that then, but then looking at the left-hand gold column, you, there is on the 189, $110,000, which is a 30, is that $30,000 increase?
Right.
And then that $30,000 that could be accounted for there is also in the one, two lines above it. So could that not be, I mean, I'm not making personnel decisions, but it seems like that's a duplicate, perhaps?
I can find, I can pull the personnel list if we could scroll back to this budget. And we can see if everyone for this budget is. And we can see if everyone for this budget is accounted for and being paid for out of this budget. If there's a vacancy that is not in that position, then it makes sense that there would be a budget there. But we can find that out in less than three minutes with your discretion, Mr. Chairman.
Is that the one we could, let's, we'll, let's come back to this one just to answer that question, because I mean, here again, it's $30,000, but it's also $30,000. So, let's be responsible with what we're doing. All right, well, then, thank you for that. We will come back to that one. Just somebody, please don't let me forget to come back to that. 72130?
72130 is our counselor department, where we have to show the increase for step raises, but we also lose one FTE per McDowell.
Okay. I have a motion to approve on that. It looks like there's not a net increase, but actually a $2,000 decrease overall. Any other? Okay, seeing no other discussion on this section. All in favor of moving it on, say aye. Any opposed? All right. 72210?
This is another instruction support.
Okay. I see librarians listed. What else falls into this?
Librarians, that's where the, myself, Dr. Miller, and the instruction department's funded.
Okay.
And we also, in the 399 line, is your funding for age annuity. None of your system-wide programs are funded in 399. Yeah, I mean, it's out, but we.
All right. Mr. Lindsey?
Got to ask about two. 355, travel and meals. Obviously, I know we haven't traveled this year, but even looking back historically, we haven't spent anywhere near $28,000.
So far as we know, we just increased, we're just anticipating an increase back to normal. We pay for principals' travel. We pay for secretaries' travel that go to the bank. We pay for all of those things. And any PD that, principals or on the GP side, so that's just that increase. EL teachers, their travel, all that comes out of that. Everybody's central system, intrasystem travel comes out of that line.
I just, I mean, I hate to nitpick, but it just, we've never spent $15,000. If we could cut 13,000, it's 13,000. We don't have.
Okay.
But, yeah. And then another question, and this is just, I just got to ask, periodicals, what, that, it's $45,000 in periodic.
So, the library books and periodicals are just like any other allocation. We allocate by student the periodical funds to libraries.
So, it's, it's not $45,000 worth of newspapers?
No, they send, we have considered, and librarians have talked to us about combining their periodicals and library books to one line, so.
That's what I'm coming up with next.
They could have more flexibility in spending that, those funds.
Yes.
Because they, a lot of them think that I can't buy something because it's a pure, it's not a pure article. All right. There's not a whole lot of things I consider myself an expert in, but spending nine years selling library books is one of them. I no longer do that, so I want to make that disclaimer very clear. This in no way affects my income or anything. I'm totally out of the library book business. I don't need a comptroller report. I want to clarify, $51,000, is that district-wide, is that district-wide for library books, $51,000, $52,000?
Yeah, that's the amount that's allocated.
Twenty-five hundred dollars per school?
No, it's allocated based on student.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying, how many schools do we have in the district? Oh, wait, never mind, that was the wrong question. That was the wrong question. So, the 49, and I'm assuming that 49 could cover digital periodicals as well?
I would think so.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, I know we're cutting and we need to be cutting, and like I said, I'm not making any money selling books to Murray County schools, but that number is extremely low in my mind. If we raise anything, I think that should be it. That's, now, now I understand why I never sold books to Murray County schools, because they didn't have any money. But I will say that if we can move some of that money around, if we can combine that line item, I would definitely think that that needs to be addressed right there. District of our size, we need to adjust some of that, whether that's moving some of that travel money or whatever.
We can shift that, the 14,000, you said, we can shift it to the book line.
And then I would, I would say, you could just combine, I don't know how the accounting part of that works, but combine periodicals and library books into one pot and, you know, librarians are good budgeters of their money, so. That would be my preference, if we can do that accounting code-wise. I'm fine with that.
You can.
Do you, would you anticipate pushback from librarians on that?
I don't see any. I mean, we, we looked at that at the beginning of the year and we, we didn't see anything wrong. We just, you know, we're trying to get the allocations out and we just didn't do it this year. But we can, we can move the money and then when we do the allocations, it'll just be that allocation to them. It'll be one, one less line that they have to deal with. There may be some high schools that still have periodicals, but I don't anticipate they could still fund them out of that other line. Yeah.
Principals have actually asked, can we just do that out of 432? Why do we have to, because we don't buy magazines. Some, the majority of them just.
Okay.
Mr. Fulbright, I have to say too, I mean, I'm all about adding books to the library, but that's one, just to highlight advantage of technology. I know that a lot of the librarians are requesting that the kids sign up to digital publications through the libraries so that they can access those. So, just to give a plus one for our technology spending.
Thank you. Mr. LaConne?
So, for clarification's sake, am I zeroing out 437? Is this something the board is in consensus with as far as this cut? So, zero out 437, move that to 432, and then pull 14 from travel and move it to 432? Is that correct? Do I have that?
That's what has, let, if we put those two lines together, 32 and 37, what's the total on that? I know I would be able to do that math, but. Yeah, and then I think, I don't think you even need to add the 14 into there if we're doing that. It'd be nice. I mean, I'm not gonna.
Go ahead.
Reduce, reduce travel to, what, wait, you were the one talking about travel.
Just reduce travel by 13,000 and then prove it all.
I just had a question on Scholastic. I don't know if that is here or if that's somewhere else in instruction, but I know, you know, the weekly readers that the kids get from Scholastic, that's not part of this periodicals, is it?
The weekly, the social studies weekly readers is part of textbooks.
Okay.
That was the adopted textbook for K-2.
Scholastic, right?
Yes.
Just wanted everybody to be clear on that.
Okay, good. Are we good with this adjustment and moving it on for our, our meeting? Okay. Mr. LaConne?
I figured out 72120.
Okay, let's go back up to 721. Oh, before we do that, are we good with this section to go ahead and move this on? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, now let's move back to the one we were on previous.
This position can be cut. Yes, the budget was increased in 189. It was expected that that position would be coded to 161, but it was coded to 189. That's why we are expected to over expend the budget in the 189 object code line item for this year, and then we have nothing in the 161. That is how it's going to continue next year. This is a position funded by a grant. The 161 line item can be cut down to zero without any elimination of a position.
Okay.
If that's the board's will.
Let's have that reflected. All we want is accuracy. Okay. What does that change it to? And what was it? Never mind.
1,722.
At this point, I don't.
72291.
Thank you. I appreciate that information. Are we good to move forward with this number as adjusted? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. 72215?
This is Northfield Academy, and there are no changes right now.
Okay.
We are working on, we're looking at what's the process for expanding the virtual school, but I mean, we'll have to come back to you on that. We're looking at what requirements that we have to do.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Is there any discussion or any questions on this section? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Okay. 72220?
That's me again. 72220 is special education support. 71200 is direct services to kids. So, if you look through, 105 is me, obviously, that's one FTE. Psychological personnel, 10 FTEs, that remains exactly the same. The increase you see is, of course, a step raise. 131 is medical personnel. I know that looks like a discrepancy. That is my occupational therapy assistant. That's my Coda. That's the one that, just a couple of months ago, we moved back into that line because we were on a contingency budget. It was erroneously placed there, so that's not an increase in FTEs. 135 is assessment personnel. This is my big ask. I am asking to have an additional person. This position was cut last year. This was my autism facilitator. I feel like I'm picking on my autistic population tonight. I've mentioned them more than once. Last year, when this board approved to cut 18 unfilled positions, at that moment in time, my autism facilitator had moved up to become a coordinator in my office. So, that was low-hanging fruit, if you will, and I was asked not to fill it. I will tell you that every administrative complaint that I have received this year, two OCR complaints that I have received this year have dealt with gen ed teachers or special ed teachers that are not modifying appropriately for children with autism. It's an unfortunate situation. I thought that my other behavior facilitators could handle that, and it is not going well. So, that is my big ask, is to put that position back in my budget this year. Other than that, all the other FTEs remain the same. I have one secretary, I have two clerical personnel, and in 189, I have one coordinator. All other budget lines are remaining exactly the same, but that is my big ask.
Mr. Lindsey?
If I remember from the last document we had going down to line 307, I think there was a note on there about purchasing hotspots. Is that correct?
Yes.
My question is, can we just, can we fund that out of ESER rather than?
Absolutely. Doug, you can cut the 10,000 out of that. Oh, sorry. I usurp your power.
It's a 14, it's 14,000, right?
The, the $10,000 is what we added for the hotspots.
Got you, got you, got you.
We actually still have to pay for a fax machine because medical personnel will not scan documents. So, that's what the other 3,000 is for.
Other questions regarding that reduction? Did you have some? Okay. All right, with that reduction, is that reflected? Okay. Are we feeling all right, up or down about this one? I see a thumbs up, which I'm taking as a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is Dr. Brown. I think.
Her father's in the hospital.
Oh, yeah, Miss Brown had to leave, or Dad's in the hospital, but I'll, I'll try to answer those questions.
The $224,000 section?
Yes.
Any, any conversation on this one? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
That'd be HR, right? No, this is you, technology, I'm sorry.
Okay. Good evening. This is the technology budget that was presented to you on the Sunday afternoon. There have been no changes overall. This budget falls in its total ask this year due to a couple of reasons. I think it's down $21,000. Two things. One, we worked with Doug as far as exact numbers on employees. You'll see across all of my departments that our employee numbers went down. Second thing is, he negotiated and actually internet connectivity dropped over $30,000. So, it's a total budget that has fallen over, from last year to this year. In that total budget that has fallen, there are two new positions that are funded. So, while he is down in his number, he did fund two new positions. One is a tech that would just be a general tech that would help take care of the computers we've added this year. The second position is the student manager position that would help manage our student management system, and they are funded within that number.
Okay. Is there any conversations, any questions or conversation regarding this section? That looks like the.
Total on that one is 2.17.
All right, and I see a thumbs up for a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. 72310?
That's yours.
Well, I've worked extremely hard on this part of the budget. I'll, I'll talk it. Thank you. But this is the Board of Education. This is your line items. Basically, we looked at some areas, and Doug helped me with this one too. We went through, one of, you guys, basically, this is the stuff that we spend each year. And if you look at it and see, I, it's hard, I'm in a position here, I don't want to say, hey, bosses, I'm going to cut your pay, you know, so I want you to be able to look at it and kind of tell me where you're at, what you think.
I just keep talking anyways. I guess I got, I got a big mouth. The 299 line item is the retirees' insurance. So, after people retire from the district, we carry on health insurance. So, that's the cost right there, $1,054. The other thing that, and that's all for 299 in this line item, that's all that is. Let's see what else.
Help me with the Social Security 201. Why is that such an up and down? I know we've had some issues, but we're going from a budget of 24,000 to 15,000, 2,400 to 15,000?
Twenty-four hundred to fifteen thousand?
Uh, that's correct. So it, last year, uh, was a continuation of the previous budget. It didn't take everything into account. The fifteen thousand pulls all of the board member salaries in, hits it against six point two percent of the rate for, uh, social security.
Okay.
So that's the adjustment there. Uh, also, yes, uh, i- if we have somebody that leaves and they have vacation or sick time on the books, this is where it gets paid out of. Uh, so, so that is a cost that is truly unpredictable. Uh, and we have to pay social security on that as well.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Urban.
Sorry, I was gonna ask about the other fringe benefits. What is that exactly? Can you explain that please?
That, that's, that's the retiree health insurance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lindsey.
Not questioning the number, but just trustee's commission, what exactly is that? We paying McNeese? To take care of our money or what?
So, so because we get property tax and Mr. McNeese, you know, he's the, he's the property, uh, he's the trustee for Murray County. That is their one percent. Uh, it varies based on how much, uh, property tax we bring in. Uh, so eight hundred and fifty thousand is what we have budgeted there. Uh, it's, it's, uh, calculated on also the sales tax that's brought in. There are specific revenues, usually it's, it's tax or state revenue numbers in which they get a one percent commission, and it flows through the BOE and every fund at the county as well as an expense.
So we just, we rob Peter to pay Paul, and I re- I realize this is
We rob BOE to pay Randy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, the trustee's office.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that's a revenue for the county in their general fund, but it, it wa- it's a wash across county government and county school.
It's a wash if they increase our, uh, revenue by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Alright, um, Ms. Parker.
Um, since we've kinda talked about travel and other line items, I just wanted to throw out, I'm willing to reduce our travel budget as well.
Is anyone else affected by, I'm sorry to jump in there, but anybody else affected by that? Is it just school board?
That T S B A, um, convention and Fall District that we usually I, I'd just really like for us to try not to use some hotel funds if we could particularly. I'm okay with the mileage, but I really don't think we should be going and hanging out at Gaylord.
So, uh, view of the board on this? Do we know when we're starting to have in-person meetings again?
Sure.
I can speak a little bit on that. The state is starting to open it up because a lot of the toss, the superintendents, they're opening up. I think the, uh, S R O one's gonna open up where it's gonna be in person. So the state's looking at this now and most of their things are in person. So I, I look into next school year, everything will be wide open again.
Mr. LaConan.
The executive order, uh, ends at the end of this month as of right now, and the outlook is that they will not, uh, extend the virtual meeting beyond that right now, but that's
Okay. Ms. Parker.
Let me just say, I think that I get more value out of us putting more into the training, the board retreats, if we needed to hire somebody to come here as opposed to going to Nashville for a conference, I would just, I would almost rather the money be allocated more so that way if it were up to me.
Okay. Are you proposing moving to a different line?
The, the part of the lea- the leadership portion of that was one of the things that boardsmanship and that we're somewhat required to do that's in Nashville, so, which is a two-day thing. So I don't know that I'd wanna cut all of it out. I understand what you're saying totally, but, you know, it, I think it's beneficial in many ways.
I'm just saying if somebody wants to be a level five board member, then they can pay their own gas to get there. It's kinda how I look at it.
I'm kinda leaning, and maybe this is digging into pennies, but I do for a matter of principle, think that hotel, if for a two-day conference is legit. Mileage, when you live forty miles away, is a little less of a pressing thing in my mind. So that just, and we don't have to dig it, this, I mean, because we're looking maybe at just in a thousand dollars. I mean, in all honesty. But I do think as a matter of principle, we need to examine that, uh, and think about that some more. Mr. Lindsey.
Oh, I, I, I agree with you guys. In any, any required trainings we have, the T S B A, they provide us a stipend, they call it. So the, the state does that, so that, that would pay for our, that, that pays your mileage, it pays for your, you know, what, I, was it seventy-five bucks a day or something? I don't, I don't remember, but, uh, but, but I, I, I'm with Ms. Parker. I'd, I've had to hatch it out all night. I'm willing to put it on ourselves too. Um, you know, and I, I don't know what that number is, but, uh, uh, I don't necessarily have to go to the T S B A conventions.
Take it down to five thousand?
It's good with me.
Okay, let's reduce it to five thousand then on that line. We're not gonna change the world with that, but we are gonna at least make, make a sacra- I mean, nevermind. Mr. LaConan.
I just wanna make everyone aware, this is our current number from last year for workers' comp insurance, the three twenty-eight ninety-nine. Uh, we have not received a quote from our vendor back on that. We have turned in numbers for them, so when we get the quote back, this amount could change. Uh, and that's your five thirteen line item right here. So we've budgeted what was last year in there. Uh, we expect this may go up a little bit, just letting you guys know.
Just as, as things like that happen, as changes like that are made, just flag them somehow, shoot us an email, flag them in the document. Are we good with the number being reduced by twenty-five hundred dollars? I have a head shaking of assuming it's a motion. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Seventy-two, three, two, zero.
This one is my line for the Office of the Superintendent. As you can tell, it, it has reduced. We have initially put in the, um, Chief Bookkeeper, we have taken that out. We also reduced obviously the salary, which, uh, reduces other benefits as well. So this one has came down to a little over forty thousand.
Okay. Have a thumbs up? Any discussion? Are you funded in the B E P?
Actually, I am funded in the B E P. We're gonna cut you down to that level.
Alright, no, I, I shouldn't even be joking about that, nevermind. Alright, um, I do have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Moving on. Seven two four one zero.
This is the, this is the Office of the Principals. It does take in account, uh, the, the two losses at McDowell, but it also has to increase some of the longevity pay and, uh, step rates since part of theirs is funded through that.
Any discussion here?
And it does not include the new, the new, um,
Nice scale. Okay, thank you, Ms. Parker.
Alright, what about Kids on Stage? You have on here that it's not in the budget, it was not in the budget originally, but are the total amounts, how's that handled?
So the budgeted salaries right now, because the Kids on Stage agreement really hasn't been, uh, decided, the salaries are without the Kids on Stage supplements on them included in today's budget and previous budgets that have been presented.
Look, can I turn some information down there?
Positions as well.
We do have documents from them. Uh, in fact, I received some of this af- another reminder this afternoon to, uh, see where we are with it. That's gonna be on the work session in April, and we will have a chance to address that before we have to turn in our budget officially. I will distribute those just as a working document in plenty of time that we can address it. Honestly, the Kids on Stage Board has done all the work on this. They consulted me on a few questions, I know they have you as well. So it's, it, they wanna work as a team. They said they've had some good, uh, discussions with other partners within their realm. So they have some new ideas that they want to look at exploring, but we will talk about that and get that in here in a timely manner. So I, I hope that's helpful in the discussion.
And Chair Fullbright and I have ran them through. Jake, he's looking at them right now, all the MOUs.
And I will say, they have been very receptive to our concerns, and, um, they really wanna do what we have asked. They wanna be good team players. Obviously, we all have to agree on what that definition is, so we'll address that at that time. Any others within this segment? Good. All those in favor of moving this along? Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm, I'm even gonna stop my own question right there. Cause I do think that there is a, a segment with that Kids on Stage agreement that isn't included in here. Are we? We could pass this along as it is with the understanding that that will be taken into consideration before a final vote? Can we do that? Uh, is that kinda the way things have worked in?
I, I mean, w- we can make amendments to it until it's passed by the commission in the state.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I, I wanna get consensus from everybody. Cause obviously, this is something we've talked about for quite a while, so I wanna get some good input. I'm, I'm seeing a bunch of heads, yeah, confused looks and head scratching, so.
Yeah, the confusion I have is, is what impact that has to the, to the budget itself.
Mr. LaConan.
I mean, th- there's about five positions, and i- if we're looking monetarily, just off the top of my head, they're looking at maybe a little over two hundred thousand dollars. They would provide the, that would be revenue lost and then salary decrease.
A wash.
Yes, because right now, i- i- in our payroll budget, we have those personnel, their salary less what is provided from Kids on Stage. So there's an employee in there that honestly, yes, it's being budgeted at really like ten thousand dollars, but that position is not gonna stay here if Kids on Stage doesn't exist because it pays ninety percent of their salary. So it's in their net of the Kids on Stage money until y'all make a decision.
I have a kind of a side question that just kinda popped up. When we, uh, were we to do a, a raise of some kind this year, is that raise, uh, on those five positions, is the raise calculated on the total of the, of both amounts or just what the school district pays?
Just school district.
Okay, cool.
Other comments or direction for this? Send it forward with this number with the understanding that we will revisit it with the Kids on Stage discussion? Is that agreeable?
I, I guess technically, a couple of those positions wouldn't be under this one anyway, correct?
Correct, yes.
Correct.
Yeah. But that's still, that's still gonna impact this and one other, I mean, one or two other segments as well. Yeah, yeah. I keep taking my glasses off, let me see. Seven two five two zero. Oh, wait, 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 let's vote on that previous one. With the, uh, convoluted way that I presented it, that we will pass it along as it is right now with the understanding we'll revisit it with the Kids on Stage under, uh, with that information. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay. Seven two five two zero.
Seven two five two zero is our HR department, and Ms. Gerard is going to present what she has.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to you.
Um, I'd like to ask for an additional person. Um, one, we have Ms. Tanika Claiborne's going to be retiring with us next year. Um, I've been told, I've only been here two months now, um, but I've been told by several people and I've seen it that our department is understaffed. Um, I've looked at other HR departments in similar districts, um, that have a lot more staff than we do. Um, also, the reason we exist is to, to support the teachers and to support the rest of the staff, and of course, the, you know, our teachers support our students. Um, so that's one reason as well, um, to be able to bring another person in. I'm sorry, give me that. To, to be able to bring another person in before Ms. Claiborne, um, retires with us. Um, she's definitely retiring, she's got a little countdown on her desk, twelve months to go. Uh, I keep trying to tease with her, is there any way we can get you to stay? But, um, also, if anyone knows Ms. Claiborne, she, she carries a lot of knowledge with her, more than just the benefits. Um, she's been in the district and she knows a, a lot. Um, a lot of the members in the HR are, are newer. Um, so I'd like to be able to bring someone in, be able to also train them on the benefits, cause the last thing we wanna do is, um, mess with anyone's benefits. Um, so I, I realize that being able to bring someone in and train them, that funds would need to be in the budget before. Um, she is set to retire, like I said, in, in twelve months. So in some respect, some of the, her, the, the salary for that position is totaled out for the year or so. There would possibly be a refund in some of those funds since she is going to set to retire. Um, and then some of these numbers, um, Doug can speak to the, the Kronos number that appears in my budget. I believe that's in the yeah, three seventeen, that's, that's what that's for. Um, and then some of the other numbers, we've changed a few things around. We're also, um, trying to, um, add back the program upslope, which was in Mr. Gaines' budget that we took from his budget and put it into this budget, so it wasn't actually adding to the overall budget. And then some of the other things we've, we wanted to switch around budgetary numbers, um, in those, the three ninety-nine and the seven oh one. Um, that's where those, those differences, some of those numbers look different from the previous budget to this year's.
Mr. LaConan, is the Kronos number so much higher because of the half a year versus a full year?
Uh, that's a hundred percent correct.
Okay.
And then, uh, Ready Sub was also part of that. So you're, a hundred and eighty thousand of it is Kronos and sixteen is Ready Sub.
Okay.
Uh, Ready Sub paid for itself by, we got rid of, um, Power School Smart Find Express. That was twenty-four thousand a year, so that was a small savings there, and, and this software does a, a similar job of, of contacting subs when there's a vacancy.
Okay.
Um, so that is the cost, uh, for Kronos and for Ready Sub in its entirety.
Mr. Lindsey.
What I'm about to say is not personal by any means, uh, but it's hard to talk about one line item, this guy has one person in it, and it not seem personal, but, um, this is, in, in one oh five, this is where Mr. Hickman, where you were proposing, uh, to name a, uh, a third assistant director, assistant superintendent, um, and I'm just gonna give my thoughts on it. Ms. Kinzer, I think, at our last meeting, uh, talked about the idea of doing a complete salary study, and I'm putting words in her mouth right now, but, uh, a complete salary study with every position, every department across the district, and maybe charging you guys of bringing that back sometime in September or something like that. Uh, along that way of thinking, um, I don't like the idea of picking one position out and, um, giving, giving a, this is, especially a substantial raise to that. Um, if through that salary study, we find out that, that, with the information we gather, that this needs to happen, um, you know, I think that's a more appropriate time to do that than, uh, in this budget. So, uh, I, I just, I just struggle, uh, right now on giving that type of raise, changing that, uh, when, uh, we've, we've been cutting all night long, so. when we've been cutting all night long.
To respond to that, I, you know, I don't see this so much as a raise, but the value of this position and who we have in it. And I want to make sure that we can maintain that person in this position. I think we've leaps and bounds have now got the person I think we really need in this position that can do this position, that has full ability, has not only that, but also has the pedigree to follow along along with what we're asking. However, I do understand what you are saying. You know, we first put the 115 to go along with the other when we were talking about the admin and we decided that we were going to put that out. What I tried to do was look at the value of this position compared to the other two that we have at those positions. And I just felt like that's was a needed ask. But, you know, if the board feels like the timing's wrong on this, you know, we can look at that number. But even if Mr. Ard wasn't directly beside me, the the value of what she does is just so incredible. The things that she's done the prior, what I had prior, wasn't capable of doing. And I want to make sure we maintain quality in this position because this position is going to be a shield from us in many lawsuits. Matter of fact, she's spending off at least three that I know right now that we don't have to pay all the money to Jake to do because she's qualified to do that.
Well, I appreciate hearing that. I want to ask just a little bit of clarification on the staffing itself. So we would, for the upcoming year, we would have a director or we'd have your position. And then we would have one person who's getting ready to retire. And then we would have another person brought in for that year? Is that what I'm understanding?
Sorry, I apologize. I was out a little bit last week at a loss in my family, so I had some communication that didn't quite happen. That's my fault, I apologize. So I guess it's not not for an additional person. I would say though, coming up, that Ms. Claiborne is retiring and we need like maybe not right now, and I don't know the best time to present it, but somebody will have to replace her and you'll need training time in order to be able to do that.
How many how many folks are in there now?
Current?
Two, it's not just the two of you, is it? Or is it?
No, sir. We have one for licensed, one for certified, Ms. Claiborne, who does benefits and a lot of other things, and then one who does our subs and some other things. And she also covers the front desk one day a week.
So it's four and yourself?
Yes, sir. And technically, the two retirees who are the front desk are also under my budget as well.
So this doesn't reflect an added person? I'm looking at the clerk.
No, sir, it doesn't. I apologize.
The clerical personnel is what I'm looking at right now, jumping $36,000.
That would be the staff raises, I guess.
$9,000 per person?
That was, so the upfront personnel, the receptionist personnel, were budgeted, were being paid for out of this line item but weren't budgeted in this line item. So that moved into this budget. So that the 216, 378 would pay all active employees in her department, which has no vacancies in full.
Okay, so we just didn't budget for all of them in the previous budget? I, and I'll tell you why I'm struggling with this, because I think this is an area where we have really dropped the ball. I don't think anybody in this room would argue that fact. And I do think having a person who's capable and well compensated is important. I think seeing both of these numbers jump up to this level is is what concerns me. And I, and that's, I guess, the main fault there lies in not having it correctly budgeted by our our budget process last year. So I don't know how to address that. Ms. Irvin?
Yes, I'm just seeing what you're saying about the drastic difference, but I do want to speak to the fact that I guess I've been in a unique position because, you know, just last year I was an interim for this school. And I can tell you the first line that these teachers see that's going to make or break morale is that office. And I've been in schools before I got in this position and you can drive away a lot of good people as far as your teaching staff, but what happens in that office? Another thing, just to take note, I mean, I was going to mention also about the cost savings, but is it my understanding that her title is still Chief of Staff? And that's something I struggle with. A Chief of Staff, to me, should make just theoretically more than a principal because to me, I will look at them as a superiority to that. I personally think for that position, for her pedigree, what she has to bring at the table, I personally think she's worth every penny. That's my personal view. Secondly, even if we are, which I mean, I know my my position on this will be totally different than some of yours, but even if we're funding an additional person in addition to Ms. Claiborne, I also feel like that's warranted. It may not be, maybe it's not, maybe it's just for a short period of time. But they do a lot and like I say, whenever things mess up, then that's when your teachers start looking for other districts for employment, just for whatever that's worth.
Mr. LaConan, can I put you on the spot? If you don't want to answer, you can say you don't want to answer. But, well, I gave him an out and if he says he don't want to answer, then he'll be answering my question. But in the process, as you began to take over, as the financial act was implemented, you began to work with the HR department. Was it your experience that that some of our deficiencies within the HR department maybe could have been allocated to the fact that they are shorthanded?
I'm not entirely sure because it's a mixture.
I said some, some, not all, but some.
I ain't gonna answer.
Got you. But, and I shouldn't have put him on the spot, but but where I stand, I would be okay with adding the position.
I would, I'm not in charge of the department. I don't, I do know what we get. We've been working very well with Mr. Ard. I've worked with, there's been a ton of turnover over there. They have a ton of ground to make up, you know, and, you know, they've got a tall task ahead of them in gaining ground. And I have seen improvement, you know, it just from my standpoint as a finance director, as being in charge of the team that runs payroll and knows that's what we get out of HR. And, you know, I am also glad that I have someone that I feel is going to be here. And that, you know, Kronos being delayed, we weren't sure if that, we were going to have a concrete HR director, what the result of COVID was going to be. We didn't budget for it. You know, it cost us money that we didn't have a concrete person there. You know, we, this board approved funds to get that implemented and very little was able to be done because the decision making process was horrendous and coronavirus happened and we didn't have a concrete HR director. And now that we have one and we have a great working relationship, I do see it improving regardless of of staff increasing, to say the least. But, you know, I think that, you know, she knows what she needs.
Right. And my.
I trust her.
My question wasn't necessarily, I don't want to speak about Mr. Ard personally, but I was more talking about the the position that you asked for that wasn't reflected in the budget. My point being, I would like to add that position back in because for 17 or 1800 employees, whatever we have, to have four people in that office, that's, you know, that I understand that those those people probably are overwhelmed at times. So I would like to add that back in. And again, going back to the to the salary increase, from a morale standpoint of everyone else, we don't know what we're going to do or be able to do as far as raises go. And but I do know this, we can't give anybody a 20, we can't give everyone a $20,000 raise. And so I would like to pull that 20,000 out that was added into that 105, add that into clerical personnel, plus whatever the, and then you guys will have to figure what the remainder to add one more position would be, but that would be my suggestion.
We have it in the superintendent's request column. That's the 251876 number and corresponding benefits. This budget's for the average pay range of that position, which would be 30,000, $33,000.
So what I'm wanting to do if 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 we reduce the superintendent's request by $20,000, that would get us at that number? Reduce 105 by 20,000, I have to do it by 35,000 in that line.
You'd have, yeah, you'd have to make up the ground in clerical of 33,000, yeah. Plus benefits, so that the total cost or change to the budget to add the position is with benefits included, 45,459 and 44 cents.
Right, but weren't you saying that was already included in that in that last column?
That's in column O, correct.
So if, but so my, so my actual request would be to reduce from that column, if we go to the far right column, to reduce line 105 by 35,000.
So we've been operating off of column N, as in Nancy.
I'm sorry.
We've been operating off of column N, as in Nancy. And so so basically, you're saying take that down to 80 grand, right?
Correct.
That line. All right, I've done I've done that if that's the consensus of the board. And then we can move to this line here. No, you're reducing it down to what she is currently being paid. That is what is being reflected, yes.
I actually am in support of what Mr. what Mr. Lindsay is proposing. I do think that the benefits that you can show, if we get a salary schedule for all positions next year, if we, you know, reduce our legal fees to Mr. Williver because you're handling more stuff, I feel like then there's a cost benefit analysis that can be done. But just off of two months of of employment, I think it's really hard and I do think it would be probably detrimental for morale if you have teachers that are watching this right now and they just got their 3% cut down to 1% taken out and then to have a raise for one one employee, I think would really would hurt them. And I think if we're providing you with more help, I think you'll be able to justify those benefits because it'll free you up to do more more of those things that'll reduce other costs.
Yeah, I personally would take the cut if I could have the person because that would help my office and I would rather have the person. I know personally, I'm overwhelmed in having another person in there to help me do a lot of other things. You know, as I know I'm overwhelmed as well as as others members of the staff, that it's just, there's a lot that we do that people don't know that we do and that's fine. That's our jobs and it's not that everyone has to know that. But in order for us to do our jobs well, having that additional person would would be very helpful.
Is the board in favor? Yes, if I can run the meeting for a little while. Don't make me gavel, you Doug. Looking at what you've got up there, I believe the request was to lower column O. That, but which one was the superintendent's request? End of the superintendent's request? That's not what the my understanding of what Mr. Lindsay was asking.
I, I was under the impression that in column O, that the 251876 already included that additional position.
Okay, then that's the one that needs to come down to 80 from the 115. Oh, okay, I see, I see where you're going. Then you need to raise that bottom number up then, do you not?
Yes.
The board has just said that that's what we want to look at. Well, so is mine. I want to see what happens when you do it. All right, Mr. Halt?
I think we're there. I just want to say that I think we're probably the third or fourth, or maybe we're fourth largest employer in Murray County and a third, okay. And we probably have one of the smallest HR departments. I find that kind of kind of appalling. I don't know how, I don't know how things work in HR department. I don't know that that's even going to get us to where we probably should be. I think this will, I think this will work. I'm glad, I'm hoping that this will make your department work better. And I do hope that it ends up, you know, you are able to reduce our other cost and then perhaps we can pass that along.
Thank you. Ms. Irvin?
Thank you. I just wanted to stress, especially to her being you. I don't know, I just really want to fight for her. I understand what you're saying, like with teachers, I understand that how they would feel, but I have witnessed, like I say, the value of that position. I want to also remind you that we were in a hot mess, which I know Doug's taken over all of that. But even this past year, some of the things that happened, morale starts there and it's more than just hiring employees. It's about keeping track of their benefits. Even whenever I wasn't like years ago, I mean, teachers weren't getting their health insurance paid and their things paid. And I think we've got a really great person and I want her to feel valued and I want that to be, I want her to know that we will try to take care of her with time, maybe not right now, because like I say, we need to be wrongful of where we've been and make sure we don't go there again, so.
Thank you. Mr. LaConan, what does this, just as a summary, because I don't see what was there previously,
Chairman, can you please repeat the question so I can?
What does, what does that do? Because our previous letter in column number was 713642. What is it now? 742316?
742316. And that's the additional position.
Raising that one by about 19? No, we meant 29, 29,000, okay. Board, I've got a thumbs up. What else do I have? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We'll move that on for further voting later at another time.
72610. This is Operation of Plant and also the next one is 72620, which Mr. Perryman is here to kind of discuss and take questions.
And in fact, 72710 is Transportation and it's next, so the next three are me. These are all budgets that we did review on the Sunday afternoon. The only changes are restoring utilities and operations back to previous numbers. We did ask for a little bit of additional equipment for maintenance due to some old equipment backhoe. The lift truck that we had to use this week is a tree was falling at Withorn during dismissal and it's showing its age. We just have some things that have to be replaced. Across Transportation, across all of the operations departments, we had an increase of $329,000, 320. of $329,000, 327 of that, it can be attributed to utilities being asked to be restored to where they were pre our budget meeting in the spring last year that cut them. And that does fund two new um general maintenance workers in the maintenance department in that total number, those would be the ones that we would use for outside for playgrounds, landscaping and ball fields. Uh, and I did send you a document last week that shows the total number of full-time positions across operations at 398. With these two general maintenance and the two in technologies, that would increase total numbers to 402. I'll take any questions you have.
Mr. Lindsay. Utilities, the um you said it increases 327,000 returning with the reduction of one building, um could we could we not just return that number back to that 320, reduce it by 327,000? I mean, looking at at past and looking at actual expenditures, um I mean, I started with electricity and um we're um actual audited number 2.1 in 1819, uh 2.1 in 1920 and then taking into the fact that we're losing a building, uh and then we upped it by 500,000. So I I just penciled in a reduction of 250,000 there and then in natural gas, reduction of 50,000 and water and sewer reduction of 50,000, that that got me at 350, which is real close to your 327 number, so I just your thoughts?
If you remember, and it'll take me a second to go through here, I sent you a document on McDowell savings, total utilities, savings for that building this year are $60,000. Uh, it and that is reflected uh through all utilities, gas, electricity, water, the only one that we think really would truly go down would be, of course, gas and electricity. However, you are upping water consumption at the other buildings as you move. We also this year took into account that we cut from last year with no growth on electricity. We're being told that electricity may increase greatly as fossil fuels are being shifted away from and there becomes a an importance on those. We're also being told that because of the demand of or the cutback in fossil fuels that natural gas could go up uh across the district. So we asked for just a return to where we were before we cut. We've not operated a full year since that cut with all buildings at at a full function, uh but that is the only increase. So if you if you choose to cut that number, I I think here's the great thing, you have to pay the utility bill no matter what you set the number at.
Yeah, that.
So if you cut it, that's fine, if the bill comes in, you still have to pay it. That's the beauty of a utility.
That was going to be my comment to that, that we can cut it for budgetary reasons, but come April or May, if we see, we we still have to pay that bill.
Correct.
So we can.
Same thing with diesel fuel and the and we did not increase diesel fuel this year.
We'll talk about that in a minute.
Knowing that we were going to do that.
One more. Under the building and contents insurance, it looks like, and I realize that's a number that just given to you guys, but was there any explanation again? I know we're going to have McDowell for some portion of this year, but but then that that building and the contents of that building will be going offline at some point.
Correct. We we are and and Doug mentioned this with workman's comp, we have sent in everything for next year for the quotes on auto, on all buildings, on any liability, on workman's comp, and we are waiting for those numbers to come back. I think I mentioned on the Sunday that all insurance numbers were kind of a floating number, we were waiting to see those. We actually did an appraisal, the the walkthrough this morning was on McDowell, on your next upcoming uh budget for our next work session, you will see the appraisal, it will be back to you and then you can choose how to move forward with that property. If we shed that property, insurance told us that they would at that point come back and and give us a kind of a retro on on whatever point forward that we actually shed it. They asked us, when did we think that would be? I gave them some determinations on some timelines that I think we would maybe talk about at a future point, but for right now, they have to budget that for a full year because there's no guarantee that that we would shed that property at any point uh until we actually do it and then they will they will uh address the number at that point.
And I'm just looking at, I I realize that the 484 number is an actual number for this year, which we've already paid, it just seems like a big jump from 1920 to 2021. And I and I'm assuming Battle Creek was online before that, so that would, or maybe that accounts for it all.
It accounts for it all, Battle Creek the first year was paid out of that one time upfront number, if you remember when Battle Creek opened, there was like a 275 million, something like that, that was paid out of that, this did move everything over. Um, we saw some some not necessarily in in building um in in the contents, but we did see quite a bit of an adjustment to insurance rates due to some things that had happened here, uh and you'll see those in some of the other numbers, but um we are, we've turned everything in, we thought we would have it by now, we should have it within the next two weeks on on all forms of insurance.
Any other questions or comments regarding this section of the budget? Mr. Lindsay. I'll propose those cuts.
Okay.
Reduce 415 by 250,000. Reduce 434 by 50. 250, yes, sir. And then 434 by 50. And 454 by 50. And I promise if you go over, I'll vote to pay the bills, you have to.
Please do note that we are paying all utility bills with the credit card so that we do get a rebate, that rebate this year paid for the HVAC upgrades at Central High School to the server room, so we're we're trying to help you in in that respect.
Any further discussion or com- comments on the cuts? How much did it end up being, Doug?
That brings it down to 6,832,353 from uh 7182,353, so approximately it looks like uh 350,000. Is this something the board is in agreement with?
Got a thumbs up?
Yeah, I just had to give a motion.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Moving on.
72620 is maintenance, there's been no change since it was presented.
Good, thank you.
It does include uh the two new positions that we did discuss.
I have a motion to go ahead and approve this. Any further discussion or questions? I don't see any, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Perryman?
72710 is Transportation, again, as presented to you on that Sunday.
Any any changes? No, you just said as presented. Have a motion to approve, Mr. Lindsay, you have your item. All right, I said we talked about diesel fuel. Again, just I I realize we can't use this year's number and I realize we probably can't use last year's number and I also realize that diesel fuel is going up, uh but uh just looking at that and and playing with it, uh and again, if you if he comes in over that, we'll pay for the diesel fuel, but uh I I penciled in $85,000 reduction in that line, just looking at it historically, going back to uh 1819 where we spent 582 and then actually budgeting an extra $150,000 over that, uh so I kind of split the difference.
From 1819 to now, we run eight more uh regular ed routes and two more special ed routes. We also have expanded our white fleet by about five vehicles, so within that diesel fuel line, all gas for all vehicles is included. We do purchase that from three entities, we purchase that from the county at a about a 28 cent markup, we purchased that from Edwards Oil at Quick Mart's, um there's about an 8 cent markup depending on where you are and what you purchase, and we do purchase from Barber Oil and that's who delivers to our six off-site um tanks that are out there. We paid a bill to date to Murray County for almost $35,000. Over the last month, we have paid approximately $60,000 across those three entities. So as fleet size has increased, we've kind of done that, we have also seen over the course of the last year, diesel fuel price has been in the 160s, um they're up and they're going nothing but up, we're anticipating and we budget that number at a little over $2. Uh, but the one thing we see this year, we have not run any field trips outside of athletics. In a normal year, we run 800 to to 900 field trips, that cost comes from the school. We have historically charged a lower price for per um mile, we charge a dollar 50 a mile right now to buses um for a field trip and that number actually had been lower at one point, we've upped it back this last year, that includes any wear and tear, anything that that has to be serviced and then also the the fuel. Again, if you cut that number, you got to pay it.
I'll give on that.
But but it is, it is quite a bit of an increase to what we're doing.
Of course, I got tires and tubes, historically it seemed like that uh, I don't want to use the word slush fund, but tires and tubes get spent, um that that not a lot gets spent throughout the year and come May, we spend a lot on tires.
They buy for the summer as we pull them in, there are six tires on every bus, we averaged that by the time we buy the tire, they mount the tire and they put it on a bus, it's about a $500 uh cost, a little over that. We run about 19,000 miles a year on an average bus during an average year, the average lifespan of a bus tire is about 20,000 miles because you have different tread depths that you have on the front and on the back gets really complicated and really boring. Uh, but what we're figuring is we are changing half of the tires on the bus fleet every year, so as we increase our number of buses, we're increasing the number of tires that we change. Uh, white fleet tires are also paid for out of this line, anything that would go offsite like Turner Osburn for an alignment or anything like that comes out of this line as well. But what we're calculating it on is about $500 a tire, half of the fleet's tires every year and and what we do is those those tires rotate from the front to the back because of different tread depths, but we're trying to stretch that out. The bulk of the tires are bought in May because what they do is all of the buses go to the lot for the summer and that is when we also have inspection, the troopers come and do our inspections in May, so any tire that is not at the proper tread depth is changed at that point. And then throughout the year, as buses come in for service, we're expecting to see minimal tire changes unless there is a problem with the tire. So the reason that that comes historically at the end is because of just the availability of the bus and the inspections. Uh, that number, we've increased over the last five years from about 110,000 up to where it is now based off of the actual mileage of the buses and the actual um cost of the tire. When I got there, they couldn't tell us how much a tire cost. And we will be running buses this summer, so as we go into the next physical year, we will have a a higher ratio. This year we benefited, we changed, when COVID happened last year, we were able out of last year's money to pull all buses in and had about a three, four month period where we could just completely do everything that we've needed to to them. Our bills up to this point have been relatively low and then as I I got a bill today for $97,000 for the shop and I about had a fit because we've not had one of those in about a year and a half, they've been running about $50,000 to $60,000. We're far enough out from that four month period last year that we're starting to see that cost go back up.
Other conversation, questions, comments on this?
I do currently have $104,000 that they will buy tires, they'll buy that many tires between now and June. That's us up today.
Okay, do I see a motion here, motion, we already have a motion actually to move this on, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Here, I've got myself turned around again.
From 7330, 7?
72810.
72810, this is the E-rate funding for IT, uh so that's the matching funds of 440,000, it will enable us to receive revenue of about 2.2 million if we succeed in that endeavor. And cannot be paid out of ESER, uh the cut to that line item compared to the superintendent's request is $200,000, those were devices for teachers, uh those can be paid out of ESER and that was the cut and the move that was made.
Okay, thank you. Motion to move this on? All those in favor, say aye. Alright, now we will move on, 73300.
This is labeled community service or what we call the Family Resource Center and Mr. Lang is going to speak to it. It's a little bit more complicated because it's got to do with matching funds.
Thank you, alright. Well.
We are asking for the educational assistance to be added back to the uh to the budget this year, uh they were uh in the budget last year, but with the cuts and trying to make the budget work, uh they would determine uh, it was determined that they will be removed for this school year. Uh, as we anticipate, uh students returning back to campuses more this fall, um and with COVID still lingering, we have found a great need for uh the Family Resource Centers uh directors there uh to be stretched really thin, especially with working with community partners. Uh, so historically, we've always had these educational assistants or clerk uh working with them uh to help support the needs of the community. So these positions will be at Columbia Central High School, Mount Pleasant Elementary School and Withthorne Middle School, these uh we're asking to return these positions back to the budget.
I I will just add, we as a require, as we get that grant, we match that, it's $29,000 for each center, we have to match it with 20,000 and we we've been been able to match it over time with our with the having by providing the assistance, that's how we make the match. Uh, last year we cut it, uh they may have overlooked it because of COVID, but it would make us more in shape to to meet the max with those additional assistance.
Any conversation on this? I'll start the conversation, I don't have a problem with cutting them back out, that's I'm one voice and I don't even know that I like my suggestion. Okay, so we're looking at 150, or I'm looking at the budget number from this year, was it? Of 131, or my, I'm gonna. Okay, and then what is the proposed for this year, 225,192? Okay, where I'm off, where am I math? Okay, so it's not 90,000? I mean, I'm talking about what kind of increase are we asking for, that's, I guess I'm just...
The increase we're asking for is 57,434 plus the benefits that go along with those.
Alright, I'm not even asking, I'm I'm talking about the overall budget is what I'm talking Medical insurance goes up by 30,000. Medical insurance goes up by 30,000. The educational assistant line item by 57,000. I mean, where am I off? If that doesn't come up to 93,215?
Medical. Just adding two positions and medical goes up. It's 30,000, but...
Am I math really bad off?
Adding three, three, good.
Per position added, you can account for about 8900 as an average per position for medical insurance cost. It can be as high as 13,700. It can be as low as 6,000 depending on the plan that they pick. So that's, that's an estimate.
Mr. Lindsey.
But, Mr. Gaines, did I hear you right? That historically, the funds we've paid for those educational assistance have been our match for that. And in the absence of that, really don't know why we got by this year with it. But in the absence of that, we may hope some liability if we don't match.
Yeah, we may be under our match. Now, I don't know what they'll do, what they'll do yet, but we are under our match right now. And our monitor person can speak more to that. No? Yeah, when we look at, we had to match $20,000 for each center. So that's what we were attempting to do by adding those back as matched. Make sure we're making that match. Or, you know, we would, yeah. We actually received $89,000 from the state, which is essentially those three, $29,000 per center, which funds really the salary for the center person, the center director. And we actually pay their benefits. So those benefits are close to the match, but they're not. Last year, when they cut those educational assistance, when they cut the clerks out of that budget, we didn't meet that match.
Yeah, I guess, and not just to this, but this speaks to something we've talked about before, about the slippery slope of matching funds and how it actually, in a lot of cases, costs us more money than we realize. Again, I'm not speaking to that, whatever these people, these positions, but this is the tricky thing we keep running to. And I have a feeling that it is scattered all over this budget in a multitude of ways that we don't realize that we're paying a lot more than we think we are for some of these things if we actually look at it. And I'm always nervous when we're chasing a match and we're just not realizing true costs.
And I understand. I know that, you know, we, as we look at those FRC, they provide a viable resource to the communities that they serve. We tried to, you know, one in Mount Pleasant, one at our high school and one at Withthorn. And those are, you know, three, the Mount Pleasant ones because in the Mount Pleasant community. And the other two are at our larger schools. So they do provide a viable resource and, you know, just as we look at that, that's, you know, the, we're returning from COVID, increased needs. I think Mr. Lang, you know, he's worked closely with them this year and just identified that, you know, that those centers need more help. So he's just asking to fund those additional positions. As I look at the money, we're close on the match in providing that match. And I understand what you're saying is when you have those matches, you end up, we end up paying the bulk of it once, because the state never increases the money. They provide the same amount.
So right now, we have nobody in those positions that they're... So I guess I, I guess I tend to agree with Mr. Fulbright. Maybe we get slapped on the hand at some point and if we do, we just make that correction then. But, so whatever that number looks like with those three removed.
So with those three removed, it would bring the total to 131,393. It would be a difference of 93,799 in the budget. These are educational assistance. Yeah, minus 130.
I guess, my point that I'm trying to make is instead of adding these positions, we just said it 30 minutes ago, that what's it going to look like when teachers are having classroom positions cut, but yet we're providing raises, we're adding this, we're adding that. So, you know, let's, let's just keep everything cohesive. Any other discussion on bringing that down versus whatever? Got a motion to approve the new number of 131,393. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right.
This will be Dr. Miller. This is the early childhood education, which this is kind of one of those other slippery slopes that Mr. Moore was kind of speaking of.
Just for clarification, when you say early childhood education, you're talking pre-K? The pre-K programs? Okay, thank you.
This is the voluntary pre-K program specifically. We have 12 voluntary pre-K programs this year. We have just submitted our grant for this year, for this upcoming year, and we're waiting obviously for approval on that grant to know exactly where our funding will be next year. I will tell you that our enrollment in our VPK program this year has been down due to COVID, where we normally sit at 100% of income eligible enrollment. Every year this year, we have been averaging about 80% all year long. So we don't know what implications that will have for us once we get our grant back. So we may, this may change, obviously. In essence, there is no change to this budget from what we did last year, except for the fact that... So last year, we added the two programs. Two years, two years ago, we added two classrooms. So you may see a difference in the budget from two years ago. The state has not changed the funding of voluntary pre-K program as far as I know since its inception. So that funding is what it is for 12 classrooms. I will tell you, you do have matching funds that have to go into this and it equates to about two of the teacher salaries and benefits that comes into this. But we do serve 240 income eligible four-year-olds in the program on a normal year. I'll try to answer any questions you have.
All right, are there any questions or comments on this? Mr. Moore.
So what does it look like if we go into next year at the same 80% level? Just kind of walk me through if the numbers are right now.
It's hard to say. I anticipate with COVID this year that they will give us grace on what our numbers were this year. If we stayed at 80% next year, we would probably lose funding. If you'll recall, three or four years ago, we didn't maintain full capacity in one of our classrooms and we did lose a classroom. That was the one we had housed at Santa Fe. We, when we got the two classrooms back, obviously we regained that, but...
So that's potentially a year from now.
Right. This year, we think they will give grace on not being...
And when you say give grace, you just mean they'll continue to fund it at last year's levels?
Yes.
And see how it shakes out?
Yes, no guarantees on that.
And I guess for me, I know we've kind of gone round and round about this. As part of we move forward, one of the things I definitely want to make sure we're looking at, because for me, this really ties into the facility's cost and how as we look at utilization of our facilities is kind of figuring out how this whole thing looks also in terms of how our community is utilizing it. You know, if it's down, if it stays down next year, which I don't know, I could off of a coin, I guess, at this point, I don't know what's going to happen with that. But I mean, I just hope we continue to look at that, how it fits in and weigh some of those costs. Because again, this is definitely another program where we do have real costs and we have to figure out. And we're kind of stuck with them. Once we, once we get started and those numbers are down, and if the state doesn't give us any grace on that, then...
Well, and if they cut the funding, then the budget will definitely go down. We'd still have pretty much all the same cost to the district as what we currently have. I mean, it may change a little bit based on salaries. But, and in addition to that, we do have two programs housed at McDowell that we will be moving to, assuming we maintain our grant, that we will, we will be moving into probably two additional buildings. So that would give a, and buildings that we currently have pre-K programs. So that would put two pre-K programs in each of our buildings. We think that's what we'll do.
Thank you. Just as I look at this, and maybe I'm reading the wrong lines or something. It looks like from what's being proposed this year to what was budgeted and amended last year, it's $2,500, $250,000 less. Am I seeing that right? Okay, I just want, honestly, I, yeah, I just appreciate that. I just was not sure if I was seeing that wrong or not. I don't have any other comments other than thank you. All right, any other comments on this?
I'm kind of shocked too.
Okay. Yeah, if it's shocking to you, that's a little disconcerting. Yeah, can we hear what's going on?
So medical insurance costs are based on what we actually, for the first time, have, oh, this is what it costs for so-and-so's medical insurance. So rather than previous years, it's been budgeted off of an average. So you can see an increase in medical insurance. I built a base maintained budget under column K that we've been working off of. And all it has is the current positions plus vacancies plus step raise and paying for all of those. So that shows that these people's medical insurance is actually going to cost next year 215,000 without adding any FTEs at all. And you can see that previous budgets have had less than that. It's had about a 174. So honestly, to fund the salary level for this budget, it really needs to go off of the maintained budget for line items 116 through 299. But those are just the current employees that are active, any vacancies, and then the step raise that's included with that. So those are the differences. And then, but if we go down to the supply line items, for example, 355 through 790, you can see that across the board, these are absolutely identical. I mean, number for number identical. So really, and Dr. Miller, I can send you this as well. And we, we really need to take this one just to cover the employees that we currently have in there. The 299, the $302, that's not in the corresponding budgets to the right. That is employer paid disability that was grandfathered in. There's only a select few employees that still have it from the old plan. So just to maintain, I would go with the maintained budget, which is, it's only a $53,000 increase. And that would make sure that we pay for all of the benefits and salaries of the people that work in this line that are being paid currently. And then the supply, service, and other line items would maintain the exact same amount. And I can send, I have a list of all of the employees and Dr. Miller and I can get together if she's agreeable to that.
I guess I'm just, maybe I'm reading this wrong. It looks like there's a drop significantly in the 116 over what we actually spent in 2019, 2020. Or am I completely reading this wrong?
What was, are you saying 2019, 2020? That's, do you have 683, 168?
Yes.
So this is, this is as of February in column J, that actual number for 2021. And these are the current people, if we paid them for a whole year, person by person, their salary for next year.
Does that represent, I mean, it's a pretty large shift, $170,000 difference. Is that due to us getting people in the correct departments now?
Yes.
That's what I'm assuming a lot of these, okay?
Yeah, honestly, so we've never been able to budget person by person. And so we've accomplished that. We found some errors, some coding that's needed to be fixed. We've worked with federal programs a lot. SPED had people getting paid out of GPE. We got those back in SPED. It's been a lot of shuffling and correcting and working with Jennifer's Department, but this is the result. So you saw some areas in which we gained ground. This is one where we can afford to pull back.
And just as a tangent to that, I mean, I get, do we feel like we're finally to the point where for the most part, everybody's, because I know over the last six years I've been here, we have been moving people around every single year.
Communication is so important when anybody moves anywhere. And so Jennifer's office, my office is saying, hey, if you can't just take somebody and say, hey, you teach this class now, or you go over here now, or, you know, and then if that doesn't make it to HR, you know, that means it doesn't get to payroll, which means it gets paid out of the line they're always getting paid out of. Well, they may have changed schools and if nobody told HR, payroll, or the central supervisor, there's no notification to change that person's location, which would change their GL code.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding Ms. Parker?
I just have one quick question. Are we still paying for a preschool supervisor position? Is that included in here or is it somewhere else?
That is actually included in the 116 line. We've carried that in the 71, 100, 116 for as long as we've had that position. It is a 120-day contract. And yes, ma'am, we do still have that position and desperately need that position.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, go ahead.
So I mean, I just, maybe I'm trying to say, why wouldn't it be in this one?
Because this one typically just doesn't have the funding to cover that position. So, I mean, if we need to move it there, then I'll work with Doug to do that, but it's gonna...
I mean, it seems like it should be there. Or am I completely, shouldn't it be?
Again, the grant doesn't have enough funds to cover it, so it would be a shortfall on the grant. So we put it in as an in-kind contribution from the district, but I will gladly work with Doug to reflect it.
That makes a little more sense. Okay.
All right. All those in favor of going with this, say aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much. 76100.
I make a motion to approve that one.
I want to argue about this for 16 minutes, please. We don't, do we need to do anything? Debt service, nothing?
Debt is what is owed to the county. We had debt fall off. You can see the cost went from 721 down to 620.
That was nice.
Amen.
Okay. So let's talk final numbers. What are we looking at?
108,432,327, a deficit of 1,231,889.
I was going to say, we're getting there.
That equates to five cents of property tax.
All right, so what is the will of the board going forward? Or the financial director going forward? Mr. Moore?
If I could ask, I know just walking through this, and so two points. One, we as a board and as a collective group here made some on-the-fly adjustments. We'll call them that tonight. And I think we also noticed as we looked through this that there were some areas that due to some scrunched faces and some other concerns and some chatter behind the computers that maybe you guys were, hadn't completely looked at or maybe missed a number here and there that didn't look quite right to you. I would simply ask, as we bring this back for us to go over, that staff continue to look at parts of this and just look it over four times, five times, 12 times, whatever it takes. What I would hope that means is when we get to the point where we're approving a budget of whatever that is, that we don't have any surprises. And I will say in years past, we have. We have gotten through the budgeting process and realized, oh, we missed something. Or something pops up on the last minute. I'll just be honest, we got documents at the 11th hour today before the meeting with some additional changes. I would just hope that, that staff would not walk away from this meeting thinking this is what it is. You know, put a bow on this document, call it done. I would hope you guys continue to look at that. I would hope you guys continue to look at things, refine things. If you see an area that you guys feel like you need to push back on, I would expect pushback on it that you feel like you need to fight for after looking at it again. On the flip side of that, if you guys see areas where you can shave some more off. I don't know, Ms. Parker mentioned this a minute ago. I mean, I, I looked at some of these numbers and without, it feels like we're getting in the weeds, but in some respect, I expect you guys to get into the weeds on this. And if you can shave $5 or $10 here or there, I know that doesn't sound like much, but it adds up to, like Mr. Fulbright said, it's a teaching position. It adds up to us when it comes time to have to, maybe we do have some growth that we're not planning for right now, where we actually have to add those positions in and we're not having to go and seek out fund balance to do that. So I would say if you guys could just continue to sharpen the pencils and look for anywhere else you can find something, it's just going to serve that we're going to get a better product than this. So just don't, don't set this on a shelf and wait for the meeting and put it in the agenda and call it done.
I appreciate that comment. And as a matter of fact, tomorrow, I'm working with Mary Ann Dersky. We're going to look through it again together. If you don't know who she is, she is the person of all people in this that works for the State Department. So I'm even going to have her walk me through and see if she sees anything and outballs everything. Because I'm not going to be satisfied with this until we can just know, know that we know and there's no surprises. Also, just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you because this is, this has truly been a collaborative and cooperative meeting like I asked for at the beginning. And I think working together, we saw what could happen. And I appreciate, you know, your eyes seeing this because, you know, you saw some things that, you know, well, okay, we can, we'll, we'll pull that. Some of the things I scrunch my face because it's like, mm, I hate for that to happen, but I understand. I completely do. So thank, thank you to all of you for such a productive meeting to get this done. And I think we did it in a very timely manner.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, considering what we accomplished, I think we did. I will, just as a point of closing, say that I do appreciate everybody's time and attention to detail. I, a lot of times myself, don't have the focus to pay attention to those details. I, I'm married to an accountant that reminds me of that numerous times each day. So I thank you all for the gifts that each one of y'all have brought to this process. Mr. Hickman, you and your staff, all the teachers, all the employees of Murray County Public Schools. Know that everybody is trying to work together for the best. Everybody has a lot on their plates, obviously, some more than others. And we just appreciate everything that's been done. It has been a collaboration and I appreciate all the work. So with that said, everybody go home and get you some good sleep and pray about the budget. We're done.